All right. All right. It is 5:00 PM and I call to order the November 18th, 2025 Board of Trustees meeting. It is 5:00 PM and I call to order the November 18th, 2025 Board of Trustees meeting. Do I hear a motion to enter executive session? Do I hear a motion to enter executive session?
Madam Chair, I move we enter executive session to discuss employment recommendations and updates, Madam Chair, I move we enter executive session to discuss employment recommendations and updates, receive a security update, and to review the 2025-2026 homeschool applications. receive a security update, and to review the 2025-2026 homeschool applications.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Shealy. Do I have a second?
Second. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. All those in favor? Thank you, Mr. Rice. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? And the motion carries. We will now enter executive session. And the motion carries. We will now enter executive session.
Welcome back. Do I hear a motion to conclude executive session?
Madam Chair, I move we conclude executive session and return to general session.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy. I call to order the November eighteenth, twenty twenty five. Oh, thank you, Mr. Rice, do I have a second? I was like hurrying out here to get this party on the road.
Yes, take your time, we're okay.
All right, Mr. Rice, thank you for your second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Now I call to order the November eighteenth, twenty twenty five Board Meeting. The District is in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act by notifying the media of the date, time, and place of the meeting. The District tapes the meeting for accuracy and preparing the minutes. I now yield the floor to Secretary Chris Rice.
Madam Chair, fellow board members, staff, and guests, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, I now yield the floor back to the Chair.
Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Madam Chair, I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pizzuti, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Just a note before I call for a motion, there are no student travel requests for our approval this month, and we are also including the twenty twenty five slate of the South Carolina School Boards Association Officers and Directors and Legislative Resolutions and the South Carolina School Board Association Constitution of Bylaw Changes. Do I hear a motion regarding the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rice, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Do I hear a motion regarding certified staff recommendations for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year?
Madam Chair, I move we approve three certified staff recommendations for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Any discussion? Ms. Price, are we still doing okay with our employment and certified?
And believe it or not, it is time soon, we will be beginning our search for next school year, so as you are out there searching for all those great staff employees, both certified and support, we will be sharing some information soon about our employment fair coming up, so not only are we looking now, but we are looking for next year already.
Thank you. We had one administrative recommendation in executive session too. That is correct, yes, okay. Okay, thank you for that. All right, all those in favor of approving the three certified staff recommendations for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Do I hear a recommendation regarding administrative recommendations for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year?
Yeah, Madam Chair, we have one new administrative recommendation for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pizzuti, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Do I hear a motion regarding the termination of employee A?
Madam Chair, I move to ratify the termination of employee A.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Do I hear a motion regarding the termination of employee B?
Madam Chair, I move to accept the superintendent's recommendation and terminate the employment of employee B immediately.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rice, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. We don't have any other actions from executive session, so now we get to move to why a lot of you were probably here tonight, honors and achievements. If you didn't on your way in, please grab a copy of the Proof Positive Newsletter, which highlights our honorees. That newsletter was on the sign-in table as you came in the door. Once we finish, we will give our honorees a chance to leave before we resume the rest of the meeting. Dr. Price, will you please step down front? We have several honorees tonight, so when you hear your name, come and stand as we tell the audience all about you and your achievements. We would like to honor a Lexington One staff member who received the Everyday Champion Award from the National Center for Learning Disabilities. Would White Knoll High Schools' John Troubridge please come forward? The National Center for Learning Disabilities recognizes outstanding educators that prove building strong relationships with students and families, improve student success in the classroom and beyond. Welcome, Mr. Pearson. They recognize a K-five educator and a six through twelve educator who are commitment to help, committed to helping students with learning disabilities thrive. Everyday Champion Award winners demonstrate their skills through personalized learning, supporting student mental health, celebrating neurodiversity, creating welcoming spaces, and believing in the potential of all students. John was awarded five thousand dollars for his ongoing contribution to special education and was celebrated in October during the National Center for Learning Disabilities Summit in Washington, DC. That's awesome. Congratulations, John, on this incredible achievement. We, we are so excited to have some amazing members of our support staff teams here with us tonight, who were recently selected as their school's Support Staff Member of the Year. Our support staff members are the glue that hold our schools together. For many of you, you are the first person to greet our students in the morning and the last person to leave at night. You work with your principals, teachers, and staff to make sure all needs are met. You work hard to make sure our schools are clean and ready for our students inside and out. You are always there to lend a helping hand, whether it's to a student who is struggling with their homework, or to a teacher who needs help setting up their classroom. You are also a role model for our students by being kind, compassionate, and hardworking. You show the importance of teamwork and perseverance. In short, you are an invaluable asset to Lexington One. We are so grateful for your service, and we are honored to celebrate you tonight. Our Support Staff Members of the Year will also be honored at a special luncheon on Thursday, where they will have their picture taken with Dr. Price, as well as a group photo. Tonight, it is your turn to shine. When your name is called, please come down forward, come down front, and receive your certificate from Dr. Price as we celebrate our Support Staff Employees of the Year. From Beechwood Middle School, we have Brooke Gibbs. From Carolina Springs Elementary, we have Yari Roman. From Centerville Elementary, Timothy Almeida. His principal is gonna receive, well, from Deerfield Elementary, Jack Stevens.
Oh, Jack.
From Gilbert Elementary, Lisa Yarborough. So Lisa, I have to ask you a quick question. In the early nineties, did you work at Lexington Kindergarten and Childcare with Jackie and Shirley? She took care of me when I was little. From Gilbert High, we have Jim Duggan. From Lexington High School, Tiffany Langley. From Lexington Technology Center, Michelle Dennis. Meadow Glen Elementary, Woodrow Martin. Can you imagine how the people in the red carpet feel when they have all their pictures taken? From Northlake Community Learning Center, Megan Rankin. Pillion Middle School, Lisa Goff. Next, we have Pleasant Hill Elementary, Heidi Weiser. Next, from Pleasant Hill Middle, John Williams. From Red Bank Elementary, Stacy Wildemuth. From Riverbluff High, Shirley Phillips. From Rocky Creek Elementary, Brandon Wooton. Next, from Saxagotha Elementary, Ms. Betty Barna. From Southlake Elementary, Carrie Gallagher. From Whitenoile Elementary, Amanda Ryan. From Whitenoile High School, Amber Barefoot. And last, but certainly not least, from Whitenoile Middle School, Maritza Castellanos. All right, that was super exciting. Next, we are excited to introduce something new this year. As part of American Education Week celebrations, we as a district are celebrating our employees who have reached significant service milestones. Ten, twenty, and thirty years of service to Lexington One. At each school and department, we are honoring individuals who have served for ten and twenty years. And I love seeing a lot of the pictures on social media that those schools posted this week at those celebrations. But tonight, we have a very special group here. Employees who have dedicated thirty or more years to Lexington One. Wow. Thirty years in one place is no small feat. Thirty years in one pla...oh, that's too... It reflects countless hours of service, care, and dedication. From supporting students and families, to keeping our schools running smoothly, to creating welcoming environments, to teaching and mentoring the next generation. Every role, every task, and every interaction has helped shape Lexington One in meaningful ways, both big and small. Thank you for showing up on the easy days and the hard days, and for allowing Lexington One to be such an important part of your professional journey. Your commitment, your steadiness, and your heart have helped shape who we are as a district. You are, and will always be, part of Lexington One family. Please join us up front as we call your names. From Gilbert High School, Anne Moore. From Gilbert Middle School, Catherine Cook and Sarah Price. From Instructional Services, Wanda Smith. From Lake Murray Elementary, Paula Club. From Lakeside Middle, Patrick Witzerick. Oh, we saw him earlier tonight. Twice in one night. From Maintenance, Elsie McCormick. From Meadow Glen Middle School, Anne Bennett. From Midway Elementary, Alitha Corley, Laura Gates, and Stephanie Turbeville. From Pillion Elementary, Nancy Walker. From Pillion High School, Mark Beanbow. From Pleasant Hill Elementary, Margaret Mitchum.
Margaret, I'm gonna tell on you for a little bit here. Margaret and I went to school together.
From Riverbluff High School, Thomas Michaud. From Saxagotha Elementary, Elizabeth Barna and Tracy Wooton. Two times in one night, Ms. Betty. From Special Services, Patricia Doobie and Linda Pooley. And rounding out the night, from Transportation, we have Connie Skipper and Connie Steen. Thank you all and congratulations on thirty years of service.
Madam Chair, a quick point of privilege. I just want to acknowledge, this is a really special accomplishment tonight. Twenty-one individuals, representing thirty years of service. For the math teachers in the room, feel free to correct me, but that's six hundred and thirty years dedicated to our district. That deserves another round of applause. Thank you all.
And I may share, because of the first year we did this award, we went back and tried to make sure we got everybody. We know we probably have not. If they broke, had a break in service, we are working on getting those and trying to...so we may have more in January. We put out a form, so people who've had a break in service can give us those years and we can calculate that. But also, we went back and did it for anybody who had thirty or more. So many of these folks tonight had more than thirty years of service. Wink, wink, Margaret Mitchum. So it's even more than that. So that we wanted to try to be all-inclusive and capture everybody, not just the ones who had thirty years this year, but thirty and more. So, and this came from an idea from an employee that mentioned something to a board member. So, thank you for that. Thank you.
All right. At the beginning of November, the South Carolina Department of Education and the South Carolina Education Oversight Committee released the 2024-2025 School Report Cards. Available online at screportcards.com, the report cards provide information about each school and district, including test performance, teacher qualifications, student safety, and other accountability measures. Schools receive an overall rating of unsatisfactory, below average, average, good, or excellent. Elementary and middle schools are rated on five indicators: academic achievement, student progress, preparing for success, multilingual learner progress, and school climate. High schools are rated on six indicators: academic achievement, preparing for success, multilingual learner progress, graduation rate, college and career readiness, and school climate. A few years ago, a new Lexington One tradition was started to recognize schools who improved their overall rating on the school report card. Tonight, we honor those schools by presenting schools-on-the-move certificates to the following schools. Representing Beechwood Middle, Principal Leah Saratopoulos and Amy Tuneson. Brooke, I think she's right in the front row. There she is. Congratulations. Representing Carolina Springs Elementary, Principal Todd Brown, and Assistant Principals Haley Goodwin and Brooke Scott. Representing Forts Pond Elementary, Principal Casey Davis. Representing Gilbert Elementary, Principal Stephen Deo. He would like the whole crew to come up. Whole crew. Well, congratulations. Thank you. All right. Next up, from Lexington Elementary, we have Principal Patrick Burnett, and Assistant Principals Albert Robertson and Cynthia Laser. Representing Pillion High, Principal Sean Bishken, and staff members Tara Cooper, Melissa Kraft, Tracy Gooding, Brittany Hardest, Clayton Hinky, Lisa Shumpert, and Brooke Shumpert. Representing Pillion Middle, Principal Jessica Erskine. Representing Saxacotha Elementary, Principal Joseph Casey, and staff members Betty Barna, Erica Bonzac, Lori Clark, Jamie Childs, Carmen Coopin, Amy Cooper, Christine Joy, Kayla Privatt, Allison Wagner, Marie Watson, and Tracy Wooton. Ms. Van. Yeah.
Joe, you gotta get somebody to take your picture from that side.
Well, do you want Marie Watson in the picture? Yeah. Well, you can get somebody else to take that. Yes. Thank you. Congratulations. So as these people make their way back to their seats, we want to take a moment to recognize our schools that retained their overall excellent rating. So Principals, as I call your schools' name, please stand. Lakeside Middle. Lexington High. Meadow Glen Elementary. Meadow Glen Middle. Midway Elementary. New Providence Elementary. Pleasant Hill Middle. And River Bluff High. Congratulations on another excellent year. Thank you all for taking time to recognize our amazing students, staff, and schools. We love sharing these achievements with you. October is National Principals Month, and we know we have the best of the best here in Lexington One. We want to recognize all Principals in the audience today. Please stand while we applaud you. If you need to leave, we will give you a quick and quiet moment to do that now.
What's the over and under on how many are left? Fifteen. You may be right. I don't know how many of the Principals are hanging around. We'll see. I think you won. It looked like it's clearing out pretty fast.
Okay. I think we're about ready to move on. All right. Lexington County School District One Board of Trustees solicits the advice and counsel of its citizens. To encourage this participation, the Board provides a citizen's participation period during board meetings. If you are unable to attend this evening or uncomfortable addressing the Board in person, you may reach out to the Board by email, telephone, or mail. Our contact information is available on the Lexington District One website. As you came in tonight, you received a card to fill out if you indicated you wanted to speak. I will call on each speaker by name and ask you to approach the lectern. We want to remind you that this meeting is being livestreamed and that the recording of this meeting will be part of the public record in perpetuity. You may comment on agenda items, school operations, policies, programs. You may not speak about or name specific individuals, whether students or school or district staff. Delial to follow this rule will result in immediate loss of the opportunity to speak. The Board will not reply to your remarks nor take any action during the Board meeting in response to your comments or questions. You may address the Board for up to three minutes. If you have any handouts for the Board, please give them to Ms. Snyder in the back of the room, and she will distribute them. Please do not clap or make any comments either while an individual speaks or after he or she finishes. First up, we have Molly Reynolds. And she's here to talk about curriculum and assessments. So you'll see that microphone right there? That way they can hear you.
Good evening, Board Members. I am here tonight to continue to express my concern for the amount of testing that is happening on the elementary school level. As a parent of two fourth-grade students, I am seeing a majority of, a majority of, sorry, a major or a minor on average four to five times a week, multiple weeks in a row. And as a parent and former educator myself, I am seeing test anxiety grow in my children and the children of my close friends. Many of my friends and family are hiring private tutors. They attend mathnasium, and they're even cutting extracurricular activities to make more time for studying and preparations. I alone spend over $400 a month. I am equally concerned with the pacing of the material, especially our math curriculum. The concepts are briefly taught, students are then tested, and then they move on. Concepts that are critical to a solid foundation and still are still very rocky in many students, and that leads to a lack of confidence and more difficulty when trying to build upon those concepts. I worry that years down the road, when concepts get more difficult, our kids won't have a solid foundation to stand on. Our kids are basically being tested to death. Their self-worth, their confidence, and overall joy for learning and being at school is diminishing. Our teachers don't have the time to slow down and help them, and they are overloaded in their own paperwork. I spoke with our principal today, and he did give me confidence that things are trying to change. There has been authority and allowances given to the teachers to help support them and to support our students. And my principal did make me feel hopeful that our concerns as parents are being heard. I just don't want my children's fourth grade year to be an experiment. I don't want them to be guinea pigs as we try to figure this out. I want to see changes made so they can have a more positive second half of the year. Our kids are more than their test scores, and they deserve to have an elementary experience. That does challenge them, that does stretch them, but it should not beat them down. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Next up, we have Jason Carnaval. Do you pronounce that as a long A or a short A? Carnaval. And he's here to talk about board policy.
Good evening. My name is Jason Carnaval, and I have children in Lexington District One schools. Last month, I stood here and pointed out that an entire quarter of science had been skipped at my children's school. I asked two simple questions. What accountability measures would be implemented district-wide to prevent this from happening again? When science is, that was number one. Number two, when science is made up later, which subject gets shortchanged next? I'm still waiting for answers. Apparently, when a parent asks the Board a direct question, the preferred response is silence. At last week's community discussion, I raised another issue. District policy clearly requires 40 minutes of daily instruction in both science and social studies. Yet, most schools continue to rotate them in nine-week blocks. I was assured on the record that this would be corrected immediately and that schools would return to daily instruction. That promise lasted about as long as tonight's agenda item, which conveniently proposes eliminating the very policy that requires daily core instruction. And while we're at it, the same policy also requires and speaks about teachers checking homework. So the new district strategy seems to be, if a parent catches us ignoring policy, just delete it. Great. Finally, a throwback question. When we were students, teachers wrote their own assessments because they actually knew their students. Today, someone, anyone, apparently writes them for us. Who is it? Central office? A vendor? A dartboard? We deserve to know whose standards are determining whether our children pass or fail. I've raised these concerns repeatedly. I've been patient. I've been ignored. Tonight, I'm simply asking for the one thing that seems in shortest supply around here: basic transparency and follow-through. When a parent speaks at this podium, do questions disappear into the other, or do they actually get answered? That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. We will be moving on to Item 9.0, New Business, and I'll turn it over to Superintendent Price.
Good evening, Madam Chair and ladies and gentlemen of the Board. The first item on the New Business Agenda is an update on our key performance indicators. You may recall that after several positions and items that were approved in last year's budget, there was a request to do some data tracking. So many of these things will not be available this early. We're waiting for score reports to come in and other results to come in, but we've got key updates built in throughout the year. So tonight, we're going to be able to give you a few updates, not complete updates, on these four items that were approved in last year's budget. Elementary Math Coaches, Middle School Academic Interventionist, Middle School Behavior Interventionist, and our Custodial Services Specialist. You may recall that the proposed key performance indicators for all of the new positions in the budget were shared with you earlier, and there is a link built into the presentation if you'd like to refer to that either now or as we go. So first off tonight is the Elementary Math Coaches. And as a reminder, the goal for these positions was to increase math achievement in elementary schools and support teachers with high-quality instructional math strategies. One metric target that we were going to follow was the number of math-related professional learning activities. And each math coach was going to use the Math Coach Tracker worksheet to track coaching activities throughout the schools. We began tracking these activities back in July, and you can see that thus far, through the first nine-week period, we've had a grand total of 2,777 professional math learning opportunities in our elementary schools. In addition to that, the second target metric was to integrate exit slips following the math PL. So we didn't want to just provide the PL. We wanted to make sure that it was quality. And so we wanted to establish the use of a common online exit slip for folks who participated in those activities, and then track the impact through the exit slip responses. What you can see here is the result of those records from each of our elementary schools, and these were rated from one to five, with one being the lowest and five being the highest. And you can see that everything ranged from, I believe, a 4.49 all the way up to a 5.0. So not only are we providing rich professional learning opportunities in the subject of math, but the feedback that we're getting from those who participate is that they're of high quality. So there's an intent to continue that trend throughout the remainder of the school year.
Dr. Price, real quick. You talk about professional learning opportunities and the folks who participated. Is the participation optional?
These professional learning activities are built in during their professional learning times that they have either before the school starts or during the week. Our elementary teachers and schools have opportunities that they're expected to participate in weekly. So each principal has their own plan that they use to provide these professional learning opportunities that are embedded within the day.
So they have to go?
Yes, that is the expectation.
Just piggybacking on that, sorry, but, because I have gotten some feedback too from teachers that they feel like it's a little bit much to be meeting, I don't know, is it once a week or is it twice?
The expectation, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Gaskins, is we're looking at once per week that they are engaged in those professional learning activities?
Yes, and these numbers also include classroom-based coaching. So it wouldn't just be the required PL sessions that teachers are coming to, but also those times when coaches are in classrooms.
So that's multiple times, or is it, you're saying, one or the other?
These numbers include both.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to the Middle School Academic Interventionist. And right now, we've got four of those working at Carolina Springs Middle, Gilbert Middle, Pillion Middle, and White Knoll Middle. And the goal was to improve achievement and growth for those students working directly with an academic interventionist. The target metric for this position was that each school, this is what we can measure now, this is not the only thing we're looking for, is that each school will establish and implement a structure for regular NTSS meetings, multi-tiered system of supports. So you may have heard teachers or administrators referring to Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three. Tier One being the regular classroom-level interventions, all the way up to Tier Two, where there's additional, and Tier Three's even more. So you can see that the first question that's asked here is, does your school currently have a structure for conducting regular NTSS meetings? And all of our schools have implemented that structure. And then you see how many times so far this quarter has that team met. And it's my understanding that the first one is high, but that's broken down by how many times it's done at each grade level, where the other ones were cumulative. So they're all right around six to eight, six to seven times, between four and seven times so far this nine weeks. And when they pull together, they're looking at school-wide data, they're looking at classroom data, they're looking at student performance data. They're talking about the things that are successful. They're looking at students who've been referred, that maybe the Tier One intervention that everyone's getting, the Tier One support, is not enough for these students to have the same kind of success. So they start talking about other ways, other interventions, and other supports that can be provided to these students. So that's something that is now being led by the Middle School Academic Interventionist, and then the services that are provided directly to those students. Middle School Behavior Interventionist. The goal here is to improve the success rates of middle school students in schools with a behavior interventionist. And the target metric that we're able to update you on right now is the number of students with one or more in-school and out-of-school suspensions or expulsions. So ideally, a behavior interventionist will help these numbers improve over time. So looking at some data that has been pulled so far, what you see here from each school is a comparison from the year before Quarter One to the current year Quarter One. So it's trying, we're trying to do an apples-to-apples comparison. And you can see here, the aqua-colored bars are the number of referrals that are turned in. The black bars are the number of in-school suspensions. The red bars are out-of-school suspensions, and the gold bars are expulsions. And so you can see, and it's hard for me to do my quick math, let me get my cheat sheet here. Looking at the tally and the numbers that we pull up, at at White Knoll Middle School, the referrals in green have gone from 357 last year to 629 this year. Now, that really caught my attention at first, and I was working with Dr. Phillips to dive in. One of the things that they're doing now is they're turning in referrals for tardies. They weren't doing that last year. So, there were 138 referrals for tardies to different classes throughout the first quarter. So, if you subtract those out, you've gone from 357 other referrals to 491. It's still an increase. The number of in-school suspensions has gone up from 75 to 107. Out-of-school suspensions have gone up from 73 to 90. Expulsions have dropped from 23 to 9. So, these are numbers that we will continue to watch and follow the efforts of the behavior interventionists that serves White Knoll Middle and Carolina Springs Middle, which is our next chart. Here, the same color categories as before. And you can see here that the number of referrals at Carolina Springs has decreased, going from 314 down to 230, the aqua-colored bars. The number of in-school suspensions has gone up from 30 to 74. Out-of-school suspensions from 39 to 45. And expulsions has dropped from 14 to 4. So, again, these are the number of suspensions, not going in the direction that we would like to see. But, I think that what we're seeing here is that we're having response to the behavior. And so, we will continue to watch to see of the strategies that the interventionists are assisting with the administrators and the teachers in the schools, whether or not they, those help improve these numbers as we move forward.
So, practically speaking, this behavior interventionist is one person. And are they supposed to have a touch point on hundreds of kids?
So, what they do is they work, it's kind of like an academic interventionist, so they work off of referrals. They see students who may be frequent flyers into an admin's office. They may be getting frequent referrals to an administrator. The interventionist then steps in and starts working with teachers and students directly to try to discuss different strategies that may be effective in helping the students stay on track and on focus while in class, but also working with teachers on different strategies that might be successful with those students. Next, another target for our behavior interventionists is the number of threat assessments needed. Now, this is a baseline data number that you see here. So, so far, the number of threat assessments, whenever there's a threat made either towards oneself, to other students, or to the school as a whole, they, we keep a record of those things. And so, that may be a situation where a student that's involved in one of those may get referred to the intervention, behavior interventionist as well. And so far, we've had nine events at Carolina Springs and seven at White Knoll Middle. Last year, we tried to pull up data on that, and at this time, we had zero at Carolina Springs and three at White Knoll Middle. So, we're definitely seeing an increase in some behavior challenges. And so, again, the efforts of the behavior interventionists will be watched closely as we move forward throughout the year. And then, one other metric that we can update you on is the percent of students served in the NTSS meetings. How many of them are meeting their intervention goals? So, every student that works with the interventionist has a goal. And so far, through the first nine weeks of the school year, Carolina Springs has already seen 20% of those students meet their goal, 22% at White Knoll Middle. And typically, when a student is working with an interventionist and they meet their goals, they work themselves out of the intervention. So, as they work themselves out, other students will be identified to be pulled in to begin receiving those services at that time. And then finally, our custodial services specialist. So, the goal here is to improve the quality control for custodial services throughout our school campuses. The metric being followed here is the number of support and coverage days provided due to school absences or support needed. And the number that we've pulled so far is we have approximately 270 site visits by this one custodial services specialist that's providing staffing coverage, employee training, equipment repair, and then complete inspections of the custodial services for the school. So, if you do some quick math, 270 visits by the 45 days of school that we've had so far. So, after 45 days, that's an average of six school visits per day. So, we were hoping to have some really good quality control there, and so far, we are seeing that. So, that's the first-quarter KPI update of the things that we're able to report at this time. As we move forward throughout the year, I believe our next update is coming in January. We'll have some winter testing results that we'll be able to share or some other target metrics that we'll be sharing. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
So, Dr. Price, I know this was a new baseline, new staffing. Did you all have some projections that you had as far as what you would see? And maybe how did those projections line up with what you're actually seeing? Or is it too early to kind of have that indication?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Cooper, but I don't believe we established a goal. It was to ensure quality. And as a result, this, these are the things that we've been tracking is how many school sites, how many visits have happened, so that those inspections can take place as well as training. Mr. Cooper, anything you'd like to add there?
The only thing I'd add to that is, you know, this brought the number of custodial managers back from what was to, to, back to that number. So, that allows us to kind of zone the district geographically, which allows, you know, us to be able to move our employees from site to site more efficiently because they don't have to cover as much miles between schools to provide the assistance that's required of them.
Dr. Price, two quick questions. The middle school academic interventionists, you're tracking those multi-tier support meetings. Have you gotten a sense of what's your ideal volume of meetings that you're shooting for in a quarter?
I believe Ms. Dr. Osborne Smith, she was here. I believe what we're targeting is three to four per month.
Could you please microphone? Thank you so much.
So, Carolina Springs meets, they meet by grade level, and they meet every week. And it's just a system and structure they have in their building. The other schools are meeting every other week in the month. So, you know, at the beginning of the year, we had to get that system and structure started. But as I've taught the principals, it's consistent every, two times a month.
Two times a month. Thank you.
Thank you. And my next question to the behavioral interventionist. So, you talked about some things that are happening in the data. Suspensions may be going up, but expulsions may be going down. I'm wondering, what does success look like? I mean, potentially, suspensions may not be a bad thing if it's resulting in reduced multiple suspensions. So, kind of what does success look like?
Well, I think, you know, there's, there's two ways to improve your suspension rate. Number one, you stop suspending kids for doing the inappropriate behaviors. That's one way to bring them down. The other is for the inappropriate behaviors to improve. And so, I think success is not only to see the suspensions go down, but the number of referrals to go down as well. And so, over time, as these strategies with individual students and strategies that are shared and with classroom teachers, as they begin to take root and take shape, hopefully, we'll see an improvement across the board in those numbers. So, it's not where we would like to see them right now, but our goal is that we will improve as the year moves forward.
And I may have made this up in my brain, but for some reason, I felt like it wasn't going to be a surprise if suspensions went up a little bit initially, and then maybe they would calm down. At least, that would be the goal.
That's what I remember too. I remember hearing that we, we may actually see the numbers rise, but I couldn't remember then if it was the behavior interventionist that I was thinking of or something else.
Well, one of, one of the additional factors for White Knoll Middle is they've also added an additional assistant principal this year. So, they're more present, they're more, they're quicker to respond. And so, they may see things more frequently than they were before when they were down an administrative position. So...
But maybe that's what I'm thinking of, yeah. And with the high schools too, having that extra...
Could be, but we only have behavior interventionist at the middle school level right now for those two specific schools. Thank you very much.
All right. We are going to move on to school report cards, and Dr. Shane Phillips, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Price, members of the Board. It's my pleasure tonight to present a summary of our state report card results for the 24-25 school year. All right. So, as part of the state and federal accountability system for South Carolina, the state has created a state report card system that rates schools on overall performance and on a variety of subcomponents. Schools can receive a rating of unsatisfactory, below-average, average, good, or excellent on each component and on the overall rating. Depending on the level of school, the overall state report card ratings for each school comprises a variety of sub-scores on several factors. Scores on these factors result in a rating using the same categories as the overall rating. At the elementary and middle school levels, the rated factors are as follows. You have academic achievement, which is worth 35 points. Preparing for success, which is worth 10 points. Multilingual learner progress, 10 points. Student progress, 35 points. And school climate, which is worth 10. For high schools, the, the sub-scores are a little bit different. Their components include academic achievement, preparing for success, and multilingual learners' progress. But then, it gets a little bit different. You have graduation rate, which is worth 19 points. College and career readiness worth 19 points. High school student success worth 12 points. And then, school climate worth five points. In each of these levels, the points add up to 100, 100 points total. And then, they use this chart to determine what your rating or grade is for that subcomponent. Actually, the subcomponents have a little different chart depending on the component, but this is how they get the overall, based on your total number of points. Districts do not receive a rating. So, the, the summary that you're going to see tonight is really just a summary of the scores of our individual schools. So, before we get started, as you're aware, the district has specific goals on the strategic plan that is submitted to the state. Each of these goals is aligned to one of the overarching district five-year targets. And those are that 95% of our graduates will be college, career, or military-ready. 95% of our students will be on track to graduate. I'm starting to be, not be able to read this because I'm blind. And an increasing number of middle and elementary school students will score at or above grade level, resulting in that academic excellence and acceleration of learning. As a note, on each of the following slides, you'll see in the lower right a specific district plan goal, if it exists, on our plan, related to the metric on the slide. If a specific goal does not exist, we have linked that metric to one of the three larger district long-term goals. So, we'll start with student achievement. The student achievement component is calculated based on the performance of student, of students on the most recent administration of the SC Ready, ELA, and math tests. So, this year, as you remember, ELA was, the standards changed a little bit. That does not affect this metric. ELA is still fully included in this. We'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to student progress. This year, 16 of our schools, just over half, received a rating of good or excellent. Three schools improved their achievement rating, and no schools decreased. So, the district strategic plan calls for an increase in the average percent of points achieved on the academic achievement points earned on the state report card. The green line on the graph there shows the interim goals that we set on the, on the strategic plan. The blue line shows our baseline, well, last year's results and this year's results. So, even though we fell just short of our interim goal, the rate of increase is encouraging because it suggests that we're growing at accelerated pace beyond those goals that we set. So, when we compare our performance on this metric to schools similar to Lexington One based on poverty and size, we see, so on the left is schools that are similar to us in poverty. So, they're within 10 points above or below us in poverty. And then, on the right, those are schools that are similar to us in size. So, these are the 10 largest districts in the state. We fall right in the middle of districts with similar poverty and in the top four of districts of similar size. All right. Let's talk about preparing for success. The preparing for success metric is similar to student achievement, except it's looking at performance of students in science and social studies. For elementary and middle schools, this is fourth grade science and sixth grade science on SC Ready. Those are the only two grades that are tested in science in the elementary and middle schools, and there is no test for social studies in elementary and middle school at this time. For high schools, this comes from the biology end-of-course exam and the US history end-of-course exam. So, these ratings reflect how kids did on those tests, how they scored on those, those individual tests. And again, this graph shows the distributions of those ratings among our schools. Eight of our schools scored good or excellent, while 11 scored average. Ten schools scored below average, and two were rated as unsatisfactory. These scores remain largely unchanged since last year. And while no specific strategic plan goal addresses this specific metric, we recognize that this is definitely an area where we have opportunities for growth. Okay. The next component is multilingual learner success. This metric is measured by the number of multilingual learner students who reach interim goals on the access test. So, depending on how a student scores initially on the access test, they have interim goals moving forward each year that they're expected to meet toward English proficiency. In the past, prior to last year, students who had exited ML services, meaning they had gained that English proficiency, were included in this metric as success stories, basically. They got credit for meeting their interim goal. Beginning last year, the state started not counting them. And so, all you have are the students who are still working toward that English proficiency. So, across the state, scores on the report card plummeted on multilingual learners' progress. And we're still kind of in that, in that area where we're working with the lowest of those proficiency levels, working to get them up toward that English proficiency. So, it's important to know that a school has to have a minimum of 20 multilingual learners who, who are included in their population in order to be rated on this. We'll talk about that a little bit more in a second. But of the schools who had a ratable population of at least 20 students, one received an excellent rating, four received a good rating, nine received average, and 12 received a rating of below average, and no schools received an unsatisfactory. Five schools did not have enough ML students to receive a rating. In this case, what happens is, is the points from here are included in the student, included in the calculation for student progress and academic achievement. So, those points just kind of get rolled up into those two categories. It's important also on this metric to note that our ML population continues to increase. ML students currently make up over 12% of our population. And with a specific increase in newcomers to, who are at the lowest language proficiency, that population continues to increase as well. All right. Student progress. This is another of the major indicators worth, worth 35 points on the report card in elementary and middle school. It's based on the change in student ELA and math scores on SC Ready from one year to the next. This change is measured in a couple of different ways. So... So one component of this measures students to the average historical growth of other students in the past, all right? And then the other way it's measured is against specific, individualized goals based on how kids performed the prior year. So of those, there are two goals included in that part. The first goal is like a typical growth target. It's, it's how much growth a kid should make in a year's worth of time with a year's worth of instruction. The second goal is sort of a stretch goal that is the amount of growth that the kid needs to make to either reach grade level proficiency or stay on or above grade level proficiency over the long haul. So they have to meet one or both of those goals, and they get points for meeting the typical growth goal, meeting the stretch growth goal. And if they don't meet the stretch growth goal, they get points for the amount of progress they make between the typical growth goal and the stretch growth goal. Does that, I hope that makes sense. It's a really complicated system, so I'm trying to make this as, as simple as possible for you on this. But Dr. Gaskins and I went to a whole day worth of stuff on this, and minds were blown. So due to the change in standards in ELA, ELA is only a minor part of the student growth component this year. So what you're seeing on student growth is largely the result of our math performance and the math growth from one year to the next. On this metric, we saw five schools awarded an excellent rating, seven a good rating, two, 11 an average rating, two a below-average rating, and one unsatisfactory rating. On this metric, 14 schools actually improved one rating this year o, over last year. Again, one of our strategic plan goals is to show improvement in the average percent of possible student progress points. Again, this graph shows that while we're making some increases, the trajectory is not keeping up with our goals. It is important to note, however, that these goals were intentionally set as rigorous since we want to focus on accelerating learning. So to that end, and since we want to emphasize student progress and academic acceleration, we conducted a deep dive with elementary and middle school principals on this indicator, where they dug into the data, looked at student progress in a disaggregated fashion in order to determine the subjects and/or student groups that might need more attention with regard to growth. Okay. Again, since this is one of the major components, we looked at how we compared to similar districts based on poverty and size. And when we look at this compared to poverty, we're in the top half of schools like us related to poverty and in the top three of those 10 largest schools in the district. I mean, in the state, excuse me. All right, moving into some of the high school things now. Graduation rate, this is based on the four-year, on-time graduation rate of students who entered the ninth grade for the first time together as a cohort. And then that number is adjusted for students who transfer in and out of the district or who withdraw from the district. Three of our high schools received an excellent rating on this metric, while the other two received an average rating. This is how our graduation rate has changed since last year. We went up almost a full point from 88.2 to 89.1. All right, college and career readiness. This metric represents the number of students in the graduation cohort who have demonstrated readiness for post-secondary employment and/or college. This can be achieved in many ways, including scores on the SAT or ACT, the South Carolina Career Readiness Exam, the ASVAB, work-based learning experiences, CATE program completion with professional certificates. We've made some really good strides in this area. Three schools received an excellent rating, one received a good rating, and the other received an average rating. And our strategic plan specifically calls for an increase in the percentage of our graduates demonstrating college and/or career readiness. And as you can see from this graph, we've surpassed the goals set on our strategic plan for each of the past two years. And in fact, you can see that we're well on, the trajectory is well on track to meeting those goals toward the end of the plan. All right. This is a relatively new measure in the past few years. High school success is a component that measures the successful completion of a high school program of study within five years. It includes the percent of students on track to graduate on time, so they look at that by grade level, ninth and 10th, I think, are who were measured this year. Next year, they'll include 11th. And then you have the, the other components of this, which include the percent of students who receive either a certificate of employability, a GED equivalence, or a regular high school diploma, either from their zone school or from adult education in their fifth year in school. We have also shown good success in this area with three schools receiving an excellent rating, one with a good, and one with an average rating. All right, school climate. This is a, a component in both the elementary, middle levels, and then the high school level as well. The school climate metric is based on student and teacher responses to selected state climate survey questions. Little over half our schools received very favorable ratings, with four excellent ratings and 12 good ratings. 11 schools received an average rating, and four received a below-average rating.
Can you just elaborate? Do you, do you know why the, the four below-average?
No. I don't know, so.
Do you know what schools?
I do. And I'd be happy to share those individual school.
I, I looked through it, I just can't remember, but I, we can talk about it later. I just, I just, I just was curious what questions.
So the questions are, again, it's not the entire survey. It's selected questions on the survey. So things like student safety, work conditions, instructional focus, questions that are around those areas for students and teachers only, or what they're drawing this from. It is, I had a principal ask me, what's the formula for calculating school climate? And it's really long and crazy-looking with Greek letters and things. So it, it's not a, it's not a simple answer to that because the weighting of these questions and, and the weighting of, or how they're calculating the score is challenging for schools to reach that excellent level. It's, it's, and it's all based on a single survey given on a single day.
And, and so with that survey, is there any correlation between like the number, the percentage of response and how they score on climate?
So, yes, we, we really don't have that problem. Schools have to come, have to have 80% completion by students and by teachers. If they don't, they kind of prorate it down, prorate your score down. We've really never run into that problem.
We don't say, do we say like, okay, it's first block, we're all going to come out and take our surveys together?
Generally speaking, that's what schools will do. They'll like do the teacher survey at like a faculty meeting, or they'll do it in homeroom for students, that kind of thing. So participation usually is not the issue. You know, it's given usually around the March-April time period. So, you know, it's, it's a challenging time of school as well. So, you know, I, I can't, I don't want to make excuses or anything else for how students or, or teachers respond to these survey questions. But there are a lot of factors that go into how people respond to that one survey on that one day on those selected questions. All right. So our strategic plan calls for an increase in the average percent of school climate points over time. And then based on results over the past couple of years, we've already surpassed our established goals. And in fact, we've surpassed the goals for the end of our strategic plan on this. So overall, folks are pretty happy as teachers and students in our schools. We obviously would love to see those continue to increase. Fact is, is historically speaking, they don't change a lot. They don't change a lot. Now, I will say this, the state is currently pursuing a new climate survey system. I know this only because I'm on the RFP committee. So, you know, there are going to be some changes involved in the school climate survey moving forward. I don't know when that's going to actually take place, but expect some changes here to maybe get a more comprehensive and meaningful survey. All right. The big reveal here. All right, so we're very pleased with the improvement of our schools on the report cards this year. Over 60% of our schools scored good or excellent on the report card, with 11 scoring average and one scoring below average. As you saw earlier in the meeting, eight schools received an increase in rating over the last year. But maybe what's more encouraging is that fully 80% or 24 out of our 30 schools who were rated last year improved on the total points earned. It didn't necessarily result in a level change, but their number of points on that total increased over the previous year. So we were very excited about that. And as you can see on this table here, in 2022, we had 16 schools with good or excellent ratings, and we now have 19. And our number of below-average schools has dropped to one, and we've added a school since then. So the playing field gets a little deeper. All right, thank you for your attention. At this time, I'll answer any other questions you guys might have.
So Dr. Phillips.
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Immediate question. So you mentioned we had one school that was below average.
Yes, sir.
What are we doing to help support that school?
So each year, and I'll let Mary address this some if she'd like, but we have focused schools, schools that we put intentional actions in place as an instruction division to help them improve, reach their own work plan goals, and by extension, then make improvements on things like the report card. You can jump in anytime you'd like, Dr. Gaskins.
First, I'd like to celebrate that the four schools that you've seen in the last two years who have had an underperforming designation no longer have one. So that's the good news because we, thank you. Because we have amazing leaders and amazing teachers in our schools, number one, but we do provide a lot of very targeted and intentional support for those schools to partner with them around a continuous improvement plan. You might imagine that, that Ms. Stanley had an improvement plan before she knew she needed an improvement plan, and you'll see her in a couple of months to present that to you because it has to be approved by the board before it's due to the state. And so we've begun working on that, and we'll let you know if additional support is needed as we develop that plan.
Board, do you have other questions?
I have, I have a question, and I don't really know how to word it, but, so let's look at preparing for success. You talked about how that's, I think, fourth grade and sixth grade, science and social studies, and then U.S. history and biology?
Yes, sir.
So it's, we got these in October, right? So how does the district use this to help for this year?
That's a really good question. So, okay. So we know at the end of the year how we did on science and, and on the end-of-course tests at the high school. We know that. We know that days after the test is given. The issue, I mean, and, and the issue is this, I think, in part. The reports that we get back on SC Ready, but especially on end-of-course, provide zero instructional information about what you did well on, what you did poorly on. SC Ready provides you a little bit of that. It breaks it down by the domain areas.
So you're saying for like biology, you just get, just many kids get As, just many get Bs on the EOC?
That's correct. But nothing to say, well, you did well on these standards, but poorly on these standards. So in an effort to, to kind of get ahead of that, we're trying to do some common assessments in those, in those end-of-course classes in the high schools. And this is still a work in progress. We're trying to do common assessments at similar times, just to kind of get a measure of where kids are in the breadth of the standards that are covered on the end-of-course test at different points in time over the, the course length. And then our content coordinators use those data to help make adjustments in professional learning, curriculum materials, other supports that they provide to the teachers. Does that make sense? Again, very little comes actually from the data that we receive on end-of-course tests that is helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you, Dr. Phillips.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Clark Cooper, and he's going to talk about capital and bond, give our capital and bond project report.
Yes, ma'am, and thank you. And as I, as I introduce this presentation, I asked Mr. Jett to walk to the podium, and as he will provide a status update on our various operational projects. It's the goal of operations project to, operations department to provide our students and provide our staff with high-quality learning spaces. We want to be responsive, and we want to deliver a product that, that our students and teachers and their families can be proud of. This evening, Mr. Jett will walk you through various projects, the additional projects that were approved by, by you, board, from the 2018 bond. And then also the completed projects from the 22B, the 23C, and 24B capital project bond issuances. Then we'll run through the 23 and 24 series projects that are underway, and we'll conclude with the 25B projects that are in the early design phase. We do have pictures of, of some of these to show progress. As you can imagine, though, some capital projects are more photogenic than others. A picture of a new turf field is, is quite striking. A sewage lift station might not be one that we share with you tonight, so you'll just see some projects listed. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Jett.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Madam Chair, Dr. Price. Want to take you through our operation projects update for 25 and 26. As Mr. Cooper said, this is a snapshot of what we've done in the past year, what we have ongoing now, and what we have moving forward into 26. First, I'll talk about the additional 2018 bond projects. These are projects that were funded from unused bond funds. These were also board-approved projects. Just run through this. Midway Elementary Blacktop and Kindergarten Playground we did, turned out beautiful. Very happy with that project. Pleasant Hills Elementary Stage Curtain and Blinds, badly needed. Appreciated project there. Rocky Creek, Creek Elementary HVAC controls. As we go through and renovate schools, we like to upgrade the control systems, which helps us remotely control temperature and humidity in spaces and provide a better learning environment. Lexington Elementary Interior Sinage and Tax Strips, this was badly needed. That school was from the early 90s, had the original tax strips, original signage, burgundy and mauve, if you remember those colors from back then. Looks great and up to date. LHS PAC house lighting, that is completed, that is brought up to LHS PAC house lighting, that is completed, that is brought up to snuff with LED lights. Gilbert High Black Box Theater, that is being procured now. That should go in within the next several months as that material comes in. River Bluff High School press box, structural enhancements, that started yesterday. Glad to get that project moving. Whitenow High School rooftop ladder, that is planned for Thanksgiving break. That is an access ladder to the PAC, to an area that previously didn't have access. First one, Mr. Cooper stole my thunder, on that one, this is the LHS turf. Beautiful project, should serve our district and that school well ten to twelve years from now. Gives us the flexibility to play multiple sports, multiple teams. If it rains, they can be playing thirty minutes later, which we did not have that capability before. Very pleased with that project. While we're at Lexington High, we went in the varsity locker rooms, did some finishes upgrades there, corrected ceilings, put in clips where the tiles can't easily be popped out, painting the walls, lockers, doors. We also did an epoxy flooring system there in that locker room, gives it a much-needed fresh look. Really updates that. Looking forward to going through all those spaces and do that eventually. Next one is LTC lighting upgrades. We went in the labs at LTC, upgraded those lights to LED lighting, brightens it up, much more visibility in there, makes it a much safer space. Also did Masonry storage bins, you see that to the right there? That is to better organize steel at the welding shop and the auto body labs, and kind of hides it from sight, better organizes it, and just makes it a cleaner, better-looking sight in the back. Next, we have Central Services Parking Lot. As you know, we did that over spring break. We do have some landscaping planned there. We're kind of waiting on cooler weather. We anticipate doing that over the next several weeks. We'll put azaleas in the front, some trees, and some of those islands there. Next, we have Good Old Pillion Elementary pump and chiller replacement. That was done as an emergency to begin with. It was a previously planned project in 2024B, if I'm correct. But it failed sooner than we anticipated. So emergency measures, we went in there in April, worked through the summer to get that new chiller, pump systems online. We did, seeing the need there, add in some system of valves and T's such that if we ever have that problem again, we can easily go in there with a temporary chiller and not be down for a day or two, or as long as it takes to get that temporary chiller. And on any project like that we're doing in the district, we will implement that as well. Here we have Centerville Elementary and Gilbert Elementary portables. We moved, moved those in this summer. Those were CO'd in July. Both of those are double portables. So basically, due to the growth in that area, we've added four portables there.
And who's currently in those portables?
Yeah, I would have to confirm with the, with the principals to which, which classes are in there.
But it's like classrooms?
Yes. My understanding, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
But I can confirm with the principal and let you know.
All right. This is Gilbert Middle scoreboard, gym floor refinishing, gym bleachers, and gym lighting upgrades. Gilbert Middle scoreboard is used by Gilbert High Track, and this new scoreboard integrates well with their new track timing system. And Gilbert Middle Gym, that was a badly needed facelift, and we had some safety issues that were corrected with the new bleachers. Very nice project.
Madam Chair, can we go back really quick to the portables?
Sure.
Sorry, I couldn't get there fast enough. So why do we have portables there when Gilbert Elementary is sitting at a forty-five day of $6.99 with a capacity of $8.90 without portables?
I may need some help from, from my instructional IT friends, but I believe the forty-five, forty-five day count does not include pre-K, so the number of actual bodies on that campus is higher, but I would have to... So that, that does not include the three K students and the four K students that are on that campus.
Okay. Dr. Price, can we get some clarity on that then, on these capacity and average daily membership numbers then moving forward?
Yes, ma'am. The ADM does not include, what, what we report to the State Department doesn't include pre-K. And I've tried to grab a quick list, and for 25, 26, it looks like Deerfield has two pre-K programs and Gilbert Elementary has four. So that may explain four classrooms.
All right, you're good. All right. Also, you'll see here Lexington High gym floor refinishing, this is in their competition gym. Project turned out great. Whitenow High School gym floor refinishing, refinishing and bleachers. We went in there this summer, took out bleachers, refinished the floor, put in the new ones, and very well pleased with that project. Also, we have Pillion High School office renovations. Went through the airstrip, all the wallpaper, badly overdue for a facelift. Went in there, new carpet, new paint. Look forward to doing that at Whitenow High and Gilbert High this summer as well. All right. Also, we have Gilbert High School corridor carpet replacement. This is all the original classroom wings, and again, we will do the office this summer '26. Other completed projects, these are not picture-worthy, but Whitenow High School tennis court repair, Red Bank Elementary parking lot lighting upgrades, River Bluff High School lighting renovations. This is where we upgraded the lighting to LED on the ramp going to the cafeteria because it's, it's not really a safe scenario for a custodian to change out for us at all there. So we're trying to take care of an issue there. Multiple lighting control upgrades. As we go around and we renovate schools, we are trying to upgrade all of our lighting controls. That gives us the, the ability to remotely control common spaces and parking lots for after-hours events. Also gives us a greater ability to monitor, you know, lights not needing to be on all night long, burning electricity unnecessarily. Oak Grove Elementary, we did some storm drain upgrades there to just improve the system. Gilbert Middle, we went in and upgraded the nurses restroom to be ADA compliant. Also did a new door to the loading dock, which gives the staff, the support staff, better access to unload and load material from the loading dock. Other completed projects, multiple parking lot stripings we've done at Lexington High, LTC, Lakeside, Rocky Creek. Whitenow Elementary, we added a door to the nurses area, which better allows them to separate sick kids from well kids. That's great, leaving the Band-Aid, you know. PHS culinary arts upgrades. We have been in the process of putting in a gas range in there to closely mirror what is used in a commercial restaurant. With that comes some fire suppression, fire alarm system upgrades we've been doing in there. We're about to do the final inspection on that and let it use it. Gilbert High School softball practice infield, we're finishing some fencing there, and then that will be complete. That should happen this week. Gilbert High and Pillion High gym painting, that was completed, and, and that was the original paint on those walls. Those are twenty-five years old, so they were overdue. Carolina Springs Middle, Pleasant Hills Middle, we did water heater replacements, you know, lighting upgrades. And then our maintenance shop, we're showing them a little love too, and we're upgrading the lights there. And those things are ancient. They've been there since the eighties, but glad to get that done. Other projects we have in design, this is looking ahead towards '26, or we're in the beginning stages, and I apologize, I missed a good one here, which I'm going to mention, which is our Lakeside Greenhouse. That is underway. Concrete was poured today, as a matter of fact. North Lake, we're doing a window and through all HVAC unit replacement. That entails 300 building, 400 building, and 600 building. A lot of those units are from the, well, the building is from the sixties. Those units are probably from the eighties. So as, as we have older buildings, we can't get replacement components, you know, those are too refrigerant old. So we're trying to go through the area and upgrade that facility. That'll be a summer '26 project. Maintenance roll-up door replacement, that will happen over Thanksgiving break and into December. Whitenow High window replacement, that is going to get started in our winter break, Christmas break. Gilbert High window replacement is ongoing. It's about halfway finished, and they look to be finished by the end of Thanksgiving break. I'm trying not to bore y'all. So I know I'm running, it's a lot to go through.
Yeah. Is the HVAC replacement at North Lake, does that include the gym?
Uh, are you talking about the old gym or the multipurpose room?
Like when you're in the courtyard, look to your left, the gym?
No, we, we've already replaced those. We, we've already went through and replaced the rooftop units.
Okay.
For that facility. These are the through-wall classroom units.
Okay.
You, you have multiple buildings of different ages on that campus, and, and some have been updated, some are, need to be updated in a couple of years. This is mainly the older parts, the 300, the 400, and part of the 600, where you have those old, I call them hotel units. They're like under the windows, you know? So we, as, as we go through and replace the windows, and that whole system needs to be replaced. So in those, mainly in the 300 and the 400, where Midlands Tech is, and Adol Ed pretty much. All right. Whitenow High School elevator modernization, much like we had to do here at the district office, that one needs to be upgraded. That is a summer project. Have to do that when there's no kids there. Multiple lift station dialer upgrades. Our old phone systems, our analog phone systems. Everything is going to digital. Correct me if I'm wrong. And our dialers need to be upgraded as well, where we have lift stations. So we're going around and doing this at about eight facilities right now. That'll happen over Christmas break into January. Deerfield portable, we are in the process, in the beginning stages, of moving a double portable to Deerfield. So that'll be another July, hope, hope, hope to finish that in, excuse me, in July. Whitenow Middle, Pillion, I'm sorry, too many projects. Pleasant Hills Middle Fine Arts Classrooms, those are, those are some upgrades we're doing to the Coral Risers. Just going to have to make some repairs there, new carpet. It's continued, got a lot, got a lot coming. River Bluff High School field lighting at practice field, this is the practice field above the track field. All right. We're going to put in the Musco lighting there, that starts December first. Gilbert High, as I mentioned a little before, Gilbert High and Whitenow High office renovations. We're going in those two, because they're, Gilbert High, Pillion High, Whitenow High are roughly the same age within a couple of years, and they need a facelift too. So much like we did at Pillion High, we're going to go in Gilbert High, Whitenow High, strip the wallpaper, paint the walls, the doors, new carpet. And we kind of have a learning curve behind this from Pillion, so I, I think we will streamline that process there. Pillion High School, we're going to renovate the little building out there at baseball, make that a nice and proper ADA compliant, they say, storage room improvements, it should be lockers, your baseball lockers. And in the batting cage facility, there is a room that we're going to convert into a softball locker. Take, take care of both of those. I'm sorry. Red Bank Elementary exterior doors and hardware, we're, we're trying to upgrade that, get rid of any kind of accessibility issues, adding some secured access hardware there. That is starting on Thanksgiving break next week. Lexington High School, Pillion High School BDA systems. For those of you who don't know what a BDA system is, that is an acronym for bidirectional amplifier. Basically, it's a two-way radio amplifier for our emergency responders. So Lexington High and Pillion High will get those. That will bring all of our high schools into compliance there. Whitenow High School, we're doing fire alarm upgrades. This is a summer '26 project. In the existing building, which in the new ninth-grade addition in the PAC, you have new fire alarm system, but in the existing building, we need to upgrade those, that system and tie it into the new systems at the ninth-grade wing and the PAC. It's going to be, that's going to be a very extensive above-ceiling project because we're going to use a voice evac system, which OSF requires now. That will be summer '26. Gilbert Middle, we're doing interior lighting upgrades there. We're going through the entire interior of the school, and we're upgrading the old fluorescent lights to LED lights, and that is again a summer project. Red Bank Elementary cooling, cooling tower replacement. This, much like Pillion Elementary, we're, we're going to start that Thanksgiving break, and we anticipate that lasting about three weeks. But much like Pillion Elementary, we're going to take measures there to add T's and valves in case we have to do a temporary chiller. There's lessons learned from the past.
Has Red Bank Elementary got their new carpet yet?
I don't believe so.
Oh. We need to add that to the list. I was in there not too long ago.
Yes.
It was bad. It was really bad.
Mr. Jett, just a quick question. The Red Bank Elementary cooling tower, is it roof-mounted or is it ground-level?
It is roof-mounted.
Okay.
And it, it is roof-mounted over the mechanical room where the pumps are.
Okay, gotcha.
So it's very easy to go in there and cut in those T's and valves and do what we need to do there.
Okay.
It's a pretty straightforward project. These are recently-approved 25B projects, but we're in the early stage, mostly in design here, early stages of design. Whitenow High School synthetic turf. We have established the basis of design at Lexington High and River Bluff High. We're moving forward with that at Whitenow High, and then Gilbert and Pillion. All right. But next summer is Whitenow High School, already going on design for that one. Whitenow High School roof and rooftop unit replacement. We had talked about this before some, but we have found the life of the roof for that facility, and again, it's about twenty-five years old. The life of the roof kind of coincides with the life of the rooftop unit. And when you do a roof, it is better to replace your rooftop units, as you may have new curbs, they have to be roof flashed in when you do the roofing system. So that is in the design phase. We have, we have begun design on that project. That is, that will be a summer '26 project and lag into the fall. But what we do in the fall should not affect the learning environment. Carolina Springs Elementary, fire and domestic water line improvements there. We've been experiencing low water pressures, and it's, it's, it's a result of all the development around there. When Carolina Springs Elementary opened their doors in 2007, you did not have loads, you did not have Walmart, you did not have anything in that corridor, other than some housing developments. We have talked with Lexington Joint Municipal about making any adjustments that they can on their end to help, and they've done everything they can. It's just for the development there, we're going to have to do something to increase fire and domestic water pressures. So again, that is a Board-approved project. We have designed, initiated there, look to do that summer '26, and take care of those issues there. Pillion High School, storm drainage improvements. We've had issues in this past summer with our, our storm water system being overwhelmed by thunderstorm after thunderstorm after thunderstorm. I think one period in June, we had eight over eight inches of rain in a seven-day period. So we're just going to do some improvements there to give us some more capacity and reduce the liability for the district. Pillion Elementary stacking loop. Um, Pian Elementary stacking loop, uh, this is something that we're doing, I mean, they need stacking, and, and we have plans, have initiated a designer to, to design a new stacking loop in there, uh, to get more, more cars safely on campus and out of the, um, sand where they're permanently stacked. Lexington High additional office space, uh, this is where we're going on the second floor, that commons area behind the office, and adding about four offices and a conference room, you know, and as we experience growth in that area, and they need additional admin staff, we have to have somewhere to put them, so. We're working towards that one, summer twenty-six, and, um, that's all I have. You guys got any questions?
Board?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
You know I was gonna do it, I gave you a heads up, but I do have some questions. Um, okay, I wanna talk specifically about the twenty-eighteen bond referendum. So, there are about seven point three million dollars left on that referendum when you take out what's already encumbered. What are our plans with that money?
Yes ma'am, um, great question, and, um, the facility study is, is our pace car with that, so, we are, um, working with McMillan, Patterson, Smith, uh, on completing the facility study, scheduled to be done, um, I believe in, from memory, in March. And the, that will be, the, with that will be the comprehensive maintenance plan, the projects that have been identified by the facility study team across the districts that, that we need to address. Um, right now, we are working with them, uh, as they are, are spitting out schools with, um, the information of items that need to, to be addressed with, with kinda severity, uh, you know, noted on there. We are looking at those and establishing if that should be done in year one, year two, year three, year four, year five, based upon, uh, the, the type of issue that it is, and when it, uh, needs to be, um, needs to be completed. So, that will generate that list of new board projects, like the ones that the, was the second slide, uh, on, on this presentation. Those were projects that came about because they, they became issues, and so we, we came to the board to, to use unused bond funds to, uh, to address those needs. We will take the results of that facility study, look at the most critical items, and those will be the projects that we bring forward, uh, to this board to, to consider for approval, to utilize, uh, those unused bond funds. Um, so I hope that answers, answers your question.
Okay. Um, also on financials, that last slide, I think it was, that you were on, yeah? So, where would we find those projects on the spreadsheet? Cause it's kind of just rolled up, some of them say just like outdoor maintenance.
So, that would be on the li- I, I believe there was a spreadsheet called the, there was that list that you just referred to, outdoor maintenance, indoor, and then there was the detailed list, uh, either on another tab or another spreadsheet, uh, and it would list those specific ones, and that was on twenty-five B series bond.
Okay, we don't see those in our board packet for what it's worth, we just see they're rolled up. So, if we can get a detail moving forward, cause it's hard to kinda look at that and then go, where, what bucket does it go in?
Yes ma'am.
Um, okay, my next question is, does the district receive executive summaries for projects from the companies that we contract with?
The only executive sum- summary we're currently receiving is from these, uh, from McMillan, Patterson, Smith on the facility study.
Okay, so we don't get any updates from the contractors in any kind of formalized form or process during a project?
Well, um, during a bond referendum, in the past bond referendum, if we did a new school, like South Lake, um, we would rely on our designers to give us an executive summary, which I think they've given us in the past, and we've used, um, the, the contractors will provide that if we ask them for it. Um, but we do meet with them regularly and have meeting minutes and agendas and, and everything that we discuss. If, if you want any, any information on any of them, I'll be glad to give it to you.
Ye- but yeah, to Mr. Jet's point, yes ma'am, on South Lake Elementary, we did receive those and present those, uh, to the board, but it, those have now stopped.
But not on like general projects?
No ma'am.
Okay, um.
If you'd like to see that moving forward, we don't, on, on a major project.
I don't necessarily need to see every meeting minute, but if you wanna share it, that, knowledge is power, that's, you share it, for sure.
For instance, when we do Wharton High rooftop in it, and, uh, unit in HVAC, sorry, rooftop unit and roof replacement there, if you wanted to see something for a larger project like that, that's not a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, board, anything else for Mr. Jet or Mr. Cooper? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have several new policies, so we're gonna start with, um, policy ID, and I'll turn that over to Dr. Gaskins. Nope, we're gonna start with policy IC, but I'm still gonna turn it over to Dr. Gaskins.
Thank you, I think I have several in a row here, so, policy IC school year, uh, the recommended revisions designate professional learning days consistent with the new Educator Assistance Act. It also adds more specificity from the model around makeup days, as well as adding information about e-learning. And I don't believe I've rece- well, yes, I do, I have received some feedback on this one, um, that I'll be studying to see how we can incorporate.
Okay. Board, other than the feedback she's already received, does anyone else have any feedback for policy IC?
Madam Chair, I just wanna talk about some of that on the record, if possible. Um, I did send, um, Dr. Price and I had a conversation, I sent sort of forward a recommendation of a policy, I shared it with all the board members as well, but I just wanted to share some reasoning behind why I think some of those things are important. Um, the first one has to do with the fact that we don't operate currently, we don't open the school, the typical before the third Monday of August or whatever that rule was, so I just felt like that need to be reflected in policy, that we operate on a modified calendar. Um, so that's one of them, sorry, I'm trying to pull it up. Um, the other thing that I think, um, is important is the process by which y'all as a district bring a recommendation of a calendar forward. So, it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that typically or historically y'all have used a committee. I think it's important for the board to have knowledge of, not necessarily the name, but the role of the people that are on that committee. Um, and I made some recommendations of some balanced representation that I feel like needs to be carefully paid attention to, that we don't have heavy amounts from one particular attendance area, that we've spread that across all of our attendance areas. And then also one that I put in here were representatives from licensed after-school or childcare providers, and the reason for that is those community members, they follow the district calendar. And so I think we need to get feedback from the community of how does a district calendar impact their day-in and day-out lives and the way that they run their businesses and, and so forth. Um, and then the last one that I think is just worth talking about is e-learning. Um, I know that we kinda put a unofficial process in place last year when we were talking about the calendar, but it was not necessarily reflected anywhere in policy, and so I think it's important that we share with the community what our e-learning sort of general framework looks like, when we will use it, maybe when we won't use it. And then a process by which we are going to ensure that we get a consistent review of, is e-learning something that's working, is it something we wanna do differently? I think somebody was using the term like synchronous and asynchronous learning, are we finding one is better than the other? So, I just think that during the calendar process is a really good intentional moment for us as a district and a board to have conversations about e-learning and how we utilize it. So, that's the Cliff Notes.
Thanks, I'm gonna ask a quick question, she made a comment about putting something in there, not about the third Monday, but how we start, but do we have to annually request a waiver to not begin? Or we can just do that?
No, we do annually submit our calendar, but we don't have to do a waiver for that as long as we indicate that we're on a modified year-round calendar. Um, the way it's written in what you have, um, we would still have the option to do that, but if the calendar committee decided that we were gonna stick with the third Monday, we also have that flexibility, the way it's written.
That's what I was wondering, so if we, if the calendar committee chose to go the third Monday, then would we have to go back and change policy to then do that? Like, so should we keep the both options in there?
I guess, I mean, I guess that's worth discussion, like, are we taking, why are we allowing the calendar to, committee to decide something so big like that? Isn't that a district decision, like, from our superintendent, for him to say, I'm recommending we start on the third Monday because?
Ultimately, it is your recommendation, like your-
That's, yes ma'am, that's correct, the calendar committee makes a recommendation, and that's presented to the school board, and the school board has the final say in what calendar is adopted. But they are allowed to provide input in that process, and that's been our practice for many years, is to use that committee to make the, the recommendation to the board. But it's the board's ultimate decision on what gets approved. So, if they were, for example, if they were to come with a recommendation to not start until after the third Monday in August, it would have to be approved by the board before it would be put into action.
Perhaps it would be something worth discussing, adding a board member to the committee? Even if a non, as a non-boarding member, just someone that could, just a thought.
Would, would it be helpful for me to describe currently what the representation on that committee looks like? So, every school and department at Central Services can recommend one to two people. So, we do have representation from every single school and every department at Central Services. Some schools recommend a teacher, some recommend a support staff member, some recommend a parent, some recommend an administrator, and we look across that committee for diversity in positions, and we make sure that we have a representative, representative from, um, every area. And so, if I, if we don't have enough parents, then we'd go back and say, could a couple of schools recommend a parent? So, and it's interesting, like, the parent that we had on last year was a childcare provider, and so we do get some of that, um, information. And so, the committee members go back to their departments and schools, they present a draft of a potential calendar, and they get feedback from their entire school. And then they summarize that feedback and bring it back to a second meeting where we have discussion. And so, some of the, um, things that have been important over time are that the, at the semester break, or at the winter break, is when we have the semester break, which is why we, you know, have been starting school before that third Monday, so that we can do that. We've also heard things like it's really important to have breaks throughout the year, so, the week at Thanksgiving has been very popular. Again, those types of things, uh, necessitate starting earlier than that third Monday, but we might have a year or two where people feel very differently about that for whatever reason.
And I think that's my concern, is that we ping-pong back and forth between, we do it one way, and then next year people feel differently, and so we start changing when we start school. I just think that's a slippery slope.
I guess just to piggyback on the, the comment Ms. Flashnick made about having a modification to the policy, so we're at first reading. Typically, what we do with these policy changes is our next meeting in December, we come back with second reading and we vote on that. So, now, I, I, I read through all of the edits that she's, she's suggested, and I really like several of them. Um, we may tweak a couple of things here and there, but I like those, but what's the process for us to chime in as other board members to let you know, hey, I like this, I don't like this, or whatever, so that by the time we get to second reading, we don't go through a futile event of trying to beat around semantics? I mean, cause it's his first reading, so what, what's our action steps going forward with what we like and what we don't like?
Well, the easy process is if everybody wanted the same thing, it would make it very simple, but that doesn't always work. So, I think it's important for, if you have any opinions on this, to send it to us. Dr. Gaskins and I are meeting to really dive into this policy later this week, based on the suggestions that we've already received, and ultimately, we'll take all of this feedback and bring to you a recommendation from administration. Of course, at that point, then it's up to the board to vote all of it, part of it, some of it in, and the rest is up for discussion. And so, if there are varying points of opinion as we go through that, we may have to go through them piece by piece in order to get to a place that the majority is happy with. But I think it's important at this time, if there are any opinions or thoughts about that particular policy, to share those with us so that all of them can be considered.
I mean, I personally like having in policy how you're going to put your committee together, and kind of having the board have some insight to say, hey, you know, we think we wanna, we think we probably need one other person or, or some other group that we add in there. I just think it's good to have the board kinda chime in on that, because the calendar is one of the biggest things that we have to vote, and it affects so many different things, so I think it's, I don't, I don't necessarily, nothing, nothing against you, Ms. McCown, but I don't necessarily think you want a board member to be on the committee, that's just my opinion, but I think the board needs to have some input into the composition of that committee, and if you have that in policy, you automatically know what it's supposed to be, that's just my thought.
So, you want more detail than the fact that it says, I will receive input from parents, legal guardians, community, and students? You want more detail than that?
Yes, because what, like, what is in the proposal she has is district-level administration, school principals are designees, classroom teachers across grade spans, parents, guardians representing multiple attendance areas and grade levels, one high school student representative, at least two representatives from licensed after-school and/or childcare who rely on the district calendar. I mean, it doesn't have to be exactly that, but I like kind of spelling, spelling out what, what you're gonna do there. I mean, and I, I'm willing to negotiate on that, but I just think it's good to kinda know what that consistency is of that group.
Alright, well, board, if you have other things to share with Dr. Price and Dr. Gaskins, do that this week. Alright, guess you're still on?
So, since, uh, policy ID and the administrative rule IDR were introduced in the October thirty-first, um, board brief, I have gotten a good bit of feedback. Originally, it was updated to reflect current state laws and regulations, including the option for a competency-based waiver and the number of instructional hours required in a school year. Um, some of the feedback is that we moved the moment of silence out of ID, because it fits better in IND, where we talk about observances. Um, the, so, a couple of changes in wording have been made since the introduction in terms of the board directing administration to ensure all state laws and regulations are complied with when designing the school schedules, not that we just go by the minimum defined program, because there are other laws and regulations that also speak to how we use our time in schools. Um, collaborative planning is spelled out here in terms of how we can release school more than those three days a year, because we already attend school, um, more than their required minutes on those weeks when we use collaborative planning. There was a suggestion that, well, let me talk first about why we recommend deleting IDR. So, there is not a car, a current model for IDR, and only a handful of districts across the state have that policy. It's difficult to have exact amounts of instructional time in policy when laws and regulations are passed that influence how we use that time. So, because minutes in a school day are finite, if we get a new law saying we have to have X number of minutes of recess now, or PE has to be longer, or whatever it may be, when that's in policy, it would just mean that we would have to come back con- constantly and update that. And to be honest, that's why we're not completely in compliance at the moment with those minutes, because of those shifts over time. Um, we do consistently, right now, have expectations for the way time is used in elementary, middle, and high schools, and have had a lot of discussion about that in the past couple of years, to maximize core instructional time. Um, if it doesn't, if the instructional time piece doesn't live in IDR, one recommendation is that we could add it to the curriculum management plan, which recently, we've said in IG, the board would, um, approve an updated curriculum management plan alongside each five-year strategic plan, which would be a way that the board could, um, you know, weigh in on the use of instructional time, understanding that, again, if a new law or regulation is passed, we may have to adjust some minutes, so we would need to add some language to that effect. Homework is also in IDR, um, a place that it could live, if we don't have that administrative rule, would be potentially in the student and/or staff handbook. would be potentially in the student and/or staff handbook. Curriculum management plan, too, maybe. We could play around with how it might look there, but definitely in the handbooks would make sense for a place for it to live.
Board?
Madam Chair, I noticed a typo. I'll just email it to you instead of me trying to bring it up. I do agree that if we are going to delete IDR, that we have got to put that information somewhere else. And I think that we still need to put some statement in IG about the policy. Like, I wrote something like, "The district will document homework expectations and instructional minute requirements within the curriculum management plan." Blah, 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 blah. I think it needs to say that somewhere in ID because in the State Board of Education's Divide, Define Program Regulations for grades one through eight, it says, quote, "Schools must determine the amount of instructional time in a subject area as approved by the local Board of Trustees." So if we don't have that anywhere, what is the mechanism by which the board is approving those instructional minutes? Does that make sense?
It does.
Yeah, and I would second moving those two topics into another policy. I think, especially the homework, I think. I mean, both of them are equally as important. So I don't know where we want to move those, but we can discuss that. I think it's probably something we need to do sooner than later.
Well, only a few districts have an IDR. Many districts have an IKB policy, which is strictly for homework.
And just for clarity, Ms. McCown, you mentioned moving it to another policy. Mrs. Flashnick mentioned putting it someplace else, like a handbook or curriculum management plan, but referencing it where it lives in policy. Okay, thank you.
All right, Board, are y'all okay if we move on to IKFAA? All right, Dr. Gaskins?
More than anything, we look to revise this policy because recently Policy JH was revised, and the late arrival and early dismissal information in this policy did not align. So it needed to be updated. And in doing so, we added more specificity about the high school course load. I haven't received any feedback on this one so far.
Board, do you have any comments for IKFAA? All right, moving on to IMD.
So we did update IMD to include the moment of silence because we took it out of policy, or recommending that we take it out of Policy ID. Makes more sense here, and just made a couple of other updates based on the model while we were doing that.
Board, do you have any comments or questions on IMD? Thank you for making that addition. We will move on to Mr. Cooper on Policy KF, KFR, KFE. You have a lot of policies here. There you go.
Yes, ma'am. And bringing forward to the board for first reading, an update to the, to the Use of Facilities policy, its admin rule, and the rates that we currently have established. You'll remember earlier this fall, we did our Use of Facilities brief to the board, and we talked about how often our facilities were used and the rates at which we were charging, and the discrepancies between the amount we were charging and the amount certain things cost. So we spent the coming months, as we told you that we would, looking at some other districts' policies and their rates and fee structures, and are bringing a revised version of these, of these policies and rules to you for first reading. The first thing to note is that the current policy is a KG policy, Public Use of School Facilities. It has been re-cotified to KF, entitled Community Use of School Facilities. So we're obviously making that, that recommendation. The highlights that you do see in red on the policy and the admin rule, they do come from changes to and updates from the model language that is incorporated, and also a strengthened indemnification clause that has been reviewed and edited by our, our legal counsel. The policy and the rule, the procedures at which the Use of Facilities requests are made and permits are issued are not changing. They are staying the same, but we have just updated language and deleted some antiquated language and positions and titles that you do see in there. There's a, there's an old title that, for a position that I don't think has been in the district for perhaps 15 years. And then some, some older language that refers to the, the school plant. You know, those things, we just tried to clean up and, and make more current. But what I would like to share with you, I guess in a bit more detail for first reading, is we are adding and, or we are recommending adding an exhibit to the K, to the KG policies. Excuse me, to the KF policy. And we have included updated, updated rates for utilizing various parts of the campus and charges for personnel fees as well. In the old, in the old admin rule, the list of, of facilities was, was not, was not comprehensive. And also had a very complex per 1,000 square feet for certain larger spaces, meaning that if a organization rented Deerfield's cafeteria, the rate would be slightly different, maybe even just change, than Pleasant Hills Elementary's cafeteria. That just, that seemed unnecessarily complicated. So you do see what we believe is a comprehensive list of proposed rates for the board to consider. And then also, included in your packet, you will see a spreadsheet. This is kind of our, was kind of our worksheet of what we looked at in terms of bringing some recommended rates for the board to consider. You'll, you see, if you, if you do have access to that spreadsheet and have it in front of you, I'll just kind of talk you through it. Because I think that's kind of the, I think that's kind of the most important thing to consider. You do see the rental and service rates that we were proposing for various parts of the building. You see the average current rate, what our, what we are currently charging as a district for those, for those areas. And then you see columns that are titled Districts A through E. In that list of districts, I didn't list the district name for a couple of reasons. I didn't think it was appropriate for me to list what another district is charging when I'm finding this information through their board policies or through their website, that type thing. And to give you an apples-to-apples comparison, I had to make some common sense, do some common sense math because not every district charges per hour. They might have a, a rate for their first four hours. So I, I did some, what I think was some basic common sense math so you could see what other districts charge. In this, in these, in these different districts that you see, there are other districts from Lexington County, there are other districts from the Midlands, and there's another district from, within the state of South Carolina that is comparable and has comparable facilities. So I wanted you to see what kind of, I guess, the going market rate is at, at other places. Not every district displayed a, you know, a similar location at four rent in every situation. So I have those graded out as best, as best we could. But it does display the different interior portions of our building, exterior portions of our building, common personnel costs, and then the performing arts centers' rates as well that are managed by IT. So it was collaborative effort with both, with both departments. I would like to point out the custodial rate. That was where, in this past spring, we saw the biggest discrepancy between what we, what we took in and what we paid out. On that presentation, I believe I included what the average housekeeper salary was per hour, which I think was in the $22 per hour range. So you might say, "Well, why are you charging 50?" Well, most of the times when you were staffing one of these events, these individuals have already worked their 40 hours. So you're not going to be paying them 22. You're going to be paying them time and a half. So that 22 is closer to 33. And then a good rule of thumb, according to our finance friends, when you consider fringe, is about, you know, 30, 35% when you consider the, what it actually costs the district to pay that, that individual. Well, that got to be right at about $49 when, when I just did that basic math. So the, the $50 an hour, in addition to being very similar to other, other districts, it does do what I think we, the board wants us to do, cover the cost. And, and so that's where that, so I wanted you to know the thought process behind that recommendation. But, but nonetheless, we, we do bring these to you for first reading. And our goal was to make the rental charges comparable to neighboring districts, but to ensure we weren't the highest. So we tried to stay in the, the lower range of, of what was comparable and bring that to you for your, for your feedback and recommendations moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Board, do you have any questions at this time about the rates?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I was told to ask this because I couldn't get it in in time. As far as security deposits are concerned, what is our process? So for example, like, somebody comes in, they rent the space, and they do something that damages a gym floor. What do we have in our ability to go and require them to pay for that replacement or repair?
Yes, ma'am. So, great question, and that is part of the, the contract that the, the party does sign with us. So the, the individual, the, the organization pre-pays the rate. We calculate the rate because, you know, you're, you're hosting an event, you're going to use it for this long, and you need, we need, we have to staff it with this many people to, to ensure it goes off. So you're, the company has charged that, that amount on the front end. Within our contract, it says that if circumstances arise where the event maybe lasts longer, instead of booking it for four hours, we had to stay there for six. Or if items are broken or damaged, we do reserve the right to charge the company for those costs incurred above and beyond what was prepaid.
And one last question on security. It says, "Renter must contract via law enforcement." Does that mean we require security? Or if they want to have security, they have to go get that directly?
If, if we require it, they have to do that directly through the appropriate law enforcement agency.
Board, Ms. Flashnick, are you good? Board, any other questions or comments? All right, Mr. Cooper, I think you have a deletion.
Yes, ma'am. And that, let me get that policy.
EBH.
EBH, yes, ma'am. We are recommending Policy EBH for deletion. It is identical to the current Policy KG. It is, it is a duplicate, and so we are recommending it be deleted.
Board, any comments on that? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Cooper. Dr. Price, I'm going to turn it over to you for your superintendent's report.
Okay, we have four pieces, or four components of the superintendent's update for this month. First has to do with our 45-day ADM report, Average Daily Membership, that we have submitted to the State Department of Education. We will do this again on Day 135, where we collect this data. And just to give you an update, so right now, according to our Average Daily Membership, that number is 26,387. You may recall that back earlier in the year, on Day 10, we gave an enrollment report. Enrollment are how many students are enrolled in the district. And so in K through 12, that was 26,460. What this is, is the Average Daily Membership. How, what's the average over the 45 days of number of students who are members of our school district? So that's the average number over the first 45 days. Look at a little history here. If you squint really hard, you can see the blue line compared to the red line. The blue line is Day 45. The red line is Day 135. So the blue line numbers are what's recorded at the end of the first nine weeks grading period. The blue line is at the end of the third nine weeks grading period. So as you can see, for the most part, they mirror one another. So enrollment is pretty consistent. There have been a couple of years where there's been a slight decline in enrollment between Day 45 and Day 135. And you saw that this past year with a slight decrease, as well as in 22, 23. Looking at the trends with regards to enrollment and ADM, our highest enrollment was in the 22, 23 school year, and then there was a significant dip. You may recall that there was another school system that opened up within our school district that impacted our enrollment at that time. And we've held steady for the past couple of years, but now we're starting to see some slight uptick in our growth, even though that school is, is still open. So that is the current update for Day 45, and we will bring you another update at Day 135, once those numbers are due. And at this time, we're going to turn it over to some members of our team to give three different updates, one on cybersecurity, one on school safety, and one on grading. And you may recognize Mr. Scarecrow there is Mr. Gillian, Gill Lionel Bluffington, who was a part of the Scarecrow competition in downtown Lexington. And we are very proud of Mr. Gill, who took first place in the business category. So at this time, I will turn it over to Ms. Garrus, who will give an update on cybersecurity.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Price. Thank you for this opportunity to give a brief update on cybersecurity. I do want to preface by saying cybersecurity is a very broad term that we use in the IT world. And so tonight, we're going to specifically focus on data privacy. Mr. Derek Berry has joined us at the podium. He and I are going to tag team throughout this presentation to share various parts about our data privacy. So first, I want to start more broad and just give some information about what laws apply to student data privacy. And there are four that I want to highlight here. These are all federal laws. The first one, we call PIPRA as the acronym. And it is really the law that gives parents rights regarding surveys given to their students when the students may be asked personal or sensitive information. The second one is FERPA. Many people are familiar with that. You get by-law notifications of FERPA all of the time. And it is for parents to be aware of the, their right to students' educational records. It also guides how school districts can use students' information and how they can give that out to other agencies. The third one is really applies to online behavior, if you will, or online resources. COPA, as we call it, some people call it COPA, 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 is a federal law that applies to websites and online providers. And so it's targeted at those folks who provide services and resources for student, or for children, under the age of 13. And we'll talk about that a little bit more throughout the presentation. But that's a really important law that we pay very close attention to for data privacy in the school district. And then the last one is SIPA. SIPA is Children's Internet Protection Act. And this has been around for quite a while. And it's a federal law that applies to school districts and public libraries. And it requires that we protect children from harmful information online. And so to do that, several ways. One of them is that we are required to provide filtering of content. And so we do that through equipment and, from an IT standpoint. And we also provide, required to have an acceptable use policy. So that's something that we do every year, that students and parents are informed of, that tells the appropriate use of the internet. SIPA is part, is required to be met, and we provide documentation to state and federal entities every year because it's tied to E-Rate funds, which are federal funds that help us pay for some of the safety requirements that we do for online. So it's something that can impact funding greatly. Also, on the state level, currently, South Carolina Department of Education is creating a new five-year instructional technology plan. And this is something that both Mr. Berry and I are very heavily involved in. And so we've appreciated that by incorporating district leaders throughout the state, that the state wants our input and leadership of what we feel is important. You can see by the bullets listed there that supporting teaching and learning is number one. And then all of the things that fall under that are supporting teaching and learning throughout our state. Once this technology plan is approved, it's at the state level now in a draft. Um, once this technology plan is approved, it's at the state level now in a draft form, it's going to provide districts with a framework and resources and benchmarks that we can use to guide cybersecurity efforts and privacy efforts, um, and some of those shared services that you see there. All right, and the, the next thing is something that's fairly new, most people have not heard of. It's called the Palmetto Data Cooperative, and it's recently been, uh, rebranded to this name. And the, uh, PDC, as I'll call it, is essential, and it helps govern how data is transported from school districts to the State Department of Education. And they don't necess-, they don't get any of the information, but they're part of the policymaking and vetting and approving of how data goes from one place to the other. So we have a lot of data that flows from our district, many of it, uh, from, most of it from Power School and other sources, and it goes to the state. And the PDC has been a voice for districts and has representation from many districts that gives that voice, um, to this process, so that we also ensuring that we're not giving the state information they don't need. So it's a need, need-to-know kind of, uh, thing, and they've been super helpful with us as districts in helping give us that voice at the state level, something we've been asking for, for a long time. Um, we are very fortunate that Mr. Derek Berry is a part of the PDC and right now is serving as the Board Chair. So with his level of expertise, he's been, um, a big part of that, and so I'm going to turn the next part of the presentation over to him as he talks about data privacy in reference to specifically Lexington One.
Thank you, Ms. Garris. Uh, Madam Chair, Board, Dr. Price, thank you for having me. Uh, something I'm so very passionate about is, uh, keeping us digitally safe and, uh, what that looks like for students and staff in our district. Uh, so wanted to talk about what that looks like as far as software and apps, websites we go to, what's being accessed, um, and how do we vet those particular things? And these are our three guiding principles in the information technology space where I get to serve, is how that they fit into the strategic plan to make sure that students are safe, that the software is compatible and accessible across every, every student and staff that we have in the district. Um, so if we go to the, am I controlling this? Oh, I get a, I get a cool clicker. It doesn't work. There we go. So, so let's talk about, i- is it accessible? Because this is a big deal for, for us, and, and when we talk about accessibility, um, does that particular app or does that software work on our devices? So we are an Apple district. We have iPads and MacBooks, uh, distributed to students and staff. Some particular apps don't necessarily work on, uh, the devices that we have. They might've been suited for a different device, and so we need to make sure those, uh, are compliant. Uh, the other part about accessibility is making sure that it's actually ADA compliant, so the WIDA access. So this is, uh, do, uh, screen readers operate properly so that all students have that ability to utilize that resource, uh, that, that was chosen? Um, and then another part of accessibility is that single sign-on, where students don't have to type a password in every time they go into another app, that they could just have a single click, um, and then get access to that particular thing without losing instruction time. So we ask a lot of data questions around safety whenever we're looking at every piece of software that we have. For instance, uh, what student and staff data is actually being used? Uh, what is moving across? Is that data encrypted? What type of encryption? I get to ask a lot of fun tech questions like that, and it's, it's a lot of fun for me, um, but very boring for us. So also, when we're thinking about that encryption, who has access to that data once it's unencrypted? So, and when we're talking about that access, is it just the teacher? Is it a principal? Is it a district? Is it the vendor? Does the vendor have full access to see those things? So it's very important to know, uh, where the access is stored. And then where is it physically stored? It could be stored here in our district, on our premises. It could be stored in a vendor's cloud, um, or does it even reside in the US? We automatically say no. If it's not here, uh, in the United States, we don't have jurisdiction to oversee that, so we say no to those particular applications. This, uh, other key considerations that we have, uh, are, does the software have a chat or a social feature? So if there is chat aboard that is unmonitored, well, that then becomes an instructional issue for the principals and the teachers to make sure that those things, uh, don't get out of hand. So we end up, uh, blocking those particular items. Um, can the staff or can teachers monitor a child's usage on the app? Because that's another important, uh, strategic goal, is making sure that teachers can actually see what's being created or what's being utilized. Um, and then this last one is around data destruction. So whenever a new tool comes out, well, it's probably replacing something else, so that something else, we might discontinue its use. Well, what are they doing with that data? And do they have a data destruction policy so that that can be destroyed since we're discontinuing the, the old tool that we've had? So when we talk about compatibility, compatibility not only applies to the type of device, but it also applies to our culture. Uh, for instance, we want to protect, uh, student intellectual property and staff intellectual property. If your student creates something wonderful, a brand-new book, an idea, a story, a song, we want to make sure that it is owned by the student. So we review things that we'll get down to in a second, like terms and conditions and privacy policies, to make sure that the student retains ownership of their own intellectual property, their IP is theirs. We don't want to give it away. And that kind of goes into the next question about commercial purposes. Are the applications or are the vendors that we have, are they selling that particular information? And if that's the case, we do not vet it for our district. We don't want our student and staff data being sold, uh, elsewhere for commercial purposes and commercial gains. So all of those things are tied into the Ts and Cs, the terms and conditions and the privacy policy. Uh, we have a full slide on that. Yay! This is the fine print. Those things that you see, they all get skipped through really fast by a lot of people? Well, that's a fun day for us. We get to read through those things and make sure that, uh, they are abiding by our culture to make sure that they're safe. So the terms and conditions is that is what is actually happening on the vendor side and what we expect of those particular pieces of service to operate. So does it have an uptime? If a particular resource is purchased and they don't have an uptime where it's going to operate consistently in the classroom, we don't need it. And then we talk about privacy policy. Well, there are a lot of privacy policies that give data away. Um, there, there are tools that, that are available that will clearly state that we are advertising to you and whatever data you put here, we will then sell it to marketers so that we can give you more advertising. So we read through those things and make sure that we amend them or we change a contract so that, uh, we can still use those tools, but we could use them safely for our students and staff. So when we're talking about vetting all these resources, there are consortiums that are out there, um, and these are two that we are actually members of. Um, the first one is the Student Data Privacy Consortium, and they have a national student, uh, data privacy agreement that we are beginning to utilize. So instead of us having to, uh, think and read through every one of those privacy policies, then we say as a district on our end, hey, this is what you as a vendor need to agree to, so that we are handing that before we start purchasing, uh, those particular items. So we set the stage instead of having to have every vendor ask us. Then the other one is the One EdTech. This is, uh, contains the Trusted Apps Directory. Uh, this is a, a really cool tool for us because they have a way, uh, they have already gone through privacy policies and built a clearinghouse that grades vendors on how they, uh, uh, protect student and staff data for us. So all of this is now combined into this particular software list, and, uh, this is housed on our Public Learn platform. Uh, it is a tool that is available for our community, for parents, for teachers, uh, and staff, that lists all of the software that we have run through, whether it is compliant or not with the Lexington One standard. So for instance, uh, you'll see the listing there. You'll notice that, um, the first one that we show you is for the ACT, and you can see that ACT is compliant, uh, and is, and it's allowed for use in our district. But we're only going to allow that, and you'll notice the grade level column, for high school. Well, that's where that ACT belongs for that particular assessment. Well, there's some other tools right below that, Adobe Creative Cloud. That's a wonderful tool, especially for Adobe Express, for students to learn and create all types of things, that it will be, uh, appropriate for all grade levels. Um, and there are also listings of things that we've gone through that are not compliant. So as you're scrolling through and, and just having a good time looking through that list, you'll see the things that we've already looked at and shown that they do not, uh, fit our standard. So with that, I wanted to kind of talk about, well, how do these things all fit together? I'm going to pass this back over to Jenny, and, uh, she's going to talk about putting them all in the same place.
Thank you. Great job, Derek. Um, I just want to reiterate as we kind of close here that while IT is presenting this and IT has a lot of responsibility for data privacy, and you can read the slide, I won't read it to you, but we talked about there's filters and privacy controls and limited access, all of those things. That's the IT side of this data privacy responsibility, but it's a shared responsibility. Instruction also is a, is a partner in that. Many of the apps and resources that we have are brought to us by instruction to use from an instructional standpoint, and so they look at it from the instructional lens. Is this, um, age-appropriate for the age they're requesting it for? Does it fit the curriculum and the standards that they're teaching in the classroom? So that's their lens that they look at before they even bring it to us, because we don't go through all the Ts and Cs, even though Derek thinks that's fun. We don't spend the time doing that if instruction doesn't feel it's a valuable resource. So that's an important partnership there. And parents are the last leg of that three-legged stool, if you will. Our parents are a partner in, we want students to build a good digital behavior, digital citizenship, online responsible behavior, and that can't just happen at school. We want that to happen at home as well. And so our parents, we want to always encourage that they maintain an open communication with their child and saying, you know, looking, asking them what they're doing at school, asking them what they're doing on their device, and talking to them even about devices at home, because a lot of kids are online at home, maybe not even on a district device. So we really want to encourage parents to do that and have those conversations so that if there's concerns, then the student will feel comfortable talking to the parent, just like any other school concern they would want them to talk to them about. And so we also want to encourage parents, if you have a concern, if you have a, um, question or you're not sure about a particular app or resource, please talk to your child's teacher, um, talk to the school administration, because that would be something they can answer, why do we use this in the classroom? How do we use it in the classroom? If it's on that software list, that doesn't mean they even use it in the classroom, so they may not. So a conversation with the parent, um, and the teacher is really the first line of any question or concern, and I would always advocate for, for that conversation to happen first, um, because together with all three of these, we can, we have to all work together to protect the data privacy and the safety of our children online. All right, we'll take any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Garris. Board, do you have questions?
I think you were just going to share that the terms and, and I may botch this, so please correct me, but the terms of service and privacy policies and data sharing practices for an app like, let's say, Canva, for public business use are different than for, um, educational use, so can you just cover that for clarity?
Yes, ma'am. And Canva's a great example. Um, uh, if you use a Canva business or personal, there is a certain terms and condition, there, if you read through their privacy policy, they will state things like, yes, we are going to use your data and we have access to your full data. Uh, well, with us, what we've done is we've talked to Canva directly, and we have the educational version. So as long as students and staff are using that version while they're signing with their Lexington District One account, well, there's a different set of privacy policy, and that is, we're keeping all of those things private, where that they're not being sold. And what happens there is Canva is intentionally following that COPA federal law, because we have many students who might be under 13 to utilize that tool, so they are forced to do that, and our agreements state that as well. Yes.
Madam Chair, I just have one more question. It's not really about cybersecurity, but it is about the relationship of instruction and technology. There's so much technology in today's environment, and we need our students to be, like you said, good stewards. We need to teach them how to use technology properly, how to be safe, how to make good judgments. But do we have any data about screen time and academic outcomes? Like how much time are students spending in a classroom actively on screens? And are we seeing any kind of shift upwards or downwards in their academic performance as a result?
So specific types of software help us track that? So DreamBox is an example of something that the state funded for a while, and we could get reports of the number of minutes students sent on, spent on DreamBox compared to their achievement in math. In terms of being able to do that widespread for software, and I'll look at Derek because he may have a more current update, the state is investing in its, uh, called in structure so that we can look at that across different software platforms, um, compare usage, also get feedback from teachers in that same platform about how they're using it, whether they're finding it useful, and compare that to student outcomes. That doesn't exist yet, but it's on the way.
Yes, yes, ma'am. That is correct. Uh, those particular instructional platforms that you have, they do have a measurement of how long that you are on that particular device, and also have recommendations on what would be effective and what is ineffective as far as a timeframe for making sure that they're, they're used right, they're used correctly. Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you both.
Thank you, Mrs. Garris and Mr. Berry. We appreciate everything that your team does to keep our students, staff, safe from all of the dangers that exist in the, uh, invisible tech world. So we thank you for all of the work that you do behind the scenes to, to make it safe for us out there. So switching from IT security, now we're going to go to more physical security, and, uh, Mr. Chris Ellisore is going to take over presenting at this time. Mr. Ellisore.
Dr. Price, Madam Chair, Board members, thank you for having me. I try to be, I will talk very quickly. I, I know we're getting past my 20-minute time here, um, just putting that out there, Jenny. So within my department, I have three individuals, myself, Chip Bradley, and Sean Spivey. We broke the county up into three regions, and we classify those as such, as in this slide, um, to kind of break our schools up, so we have a responder within those areas to help, uh, with situations that come up. Um, there is a quick video here, I'm probably going to skip through that. That's the video that was released, um, with our safety video. I don't know if we want to take the time to show that or not. I can't get to it with this, I don't think. Somebody else had to click that, I don't know who's. Yeah, we lost Matthew, so I apologize ahead of time. Okay. As long as the volume works, it's okay.
Our focus is clear. We're building school communities where every student can learn, grow, and excel. That starts with making sure students and staff feel safe, supported, and confident every day they walk through our doors. Our strong partnerships with local law enforcement agencies are central to our safety efforts. Together, we are building a culture of prevention, preparedness, and protection across every school in Lexington One.
From daily presence in schools to ongoing safety planning, we are actively involved in keeping our schools safe and welcoming.
Our students deserve a learning environment that is calm, consistent, and focused. We're united with Lexington One in creating spaces where teachers can teach and students can thrive, free from distraction or fear.
Our partnership with Lexington One is built on trust and shared purpose. When concerns arise, we act quickly and responsibly to protect everyone on campus. Together, we're committed to safe schools and strong communities.
When a safety concern is reported, we act immediately, thoroughly, and in coordination with our law enforcement partners. We are grateful for their constant support and for our community's shared commitment to protecting our schools.
We know school safety is never one and done. It is an ongoing responsibility. That's why our teams stay vigilant and proactive, always learning and improving. Thank you for being part of our shared commitment to safety. Working together, we're building schools that support and protect every student, every staff member, every day, because when our schools are safe, our students can.
Right!
Win!
Great video. I just want to go on record and say I just got a rooftop and lockdown drills, I was really in time to move in because I can't run this. Yeah, yeah, yeah. My wife's very thankful that's gone, yeah, I get it. If Matthew can get me back, we'll continue on. But that kind of gives you an overview of what we do every day here. Our School Resource Officer Program, we have 36 full-time officers covering high schools, middle schools, AES, LTC. To give you an idea of the grant coverage, I think that's important that we understand, I mean, five grant positions are 100% covered by the state, three of those grant positions are 25% covered by the state, and then one position is 100% covered by us, and then the remaining are 75, 25 of those five. Active shooter training, so the easiest way I can say this is our, our staff will do an in-person training, and then they'll do the second year a, on, they'll log into an account, online training. So if you're a new employee here, you will come to us for an in-person training, and then the following year, you will start that rotation where you're doing a in-person training one year, a virtual training in front of a computer the second year. I think we hosted about 550 people this year as new employees-ish. Devon can probably tell me correctly, but we do partner with SLED to host those trainings, so they work with us and provide that training to us. Great opportunity, but it's, it's focus is active shooter training to meet the law requirements, right? So the law requires all employees to receive active shooter training. Within that law, it also dictates that we have to use an emergency response that is a national standard. We use the ILOVIE guys' foundation for that. You see the slide up there, the whole secure lockdown, excuse me, evacuate, and then shelter, which we've been doing this for years. This is not new. It's an amazing opportunity for everyone to communicate. When we, when I started here in 2014, we were all doing something a little different. So you may hear Mr. Rogers has entered the building and that everyone's supposed to know that, hey, that's a lockdown. Or Ms. Susie is making cookies in the cafeteria and everyone's supposed to know that that's a lockdown. Well, we had to get away from that and use a common language so everyone knew what was happening, and so that's why we went to that standard response protocol. Our staff, you know, they are required to wear IDs every day. They're required to wear their Synthegix badge every day. They're required to check in and out of buildings as they move about. If they're moving, I'm moving from one building to the other, the requirement is that I check in at that front office, right? We do get some folks, our maintenance, we always have that problem with them going to work and not checking in the front office, so we get those calls. Who's this in the white truck? Well, usually it's our guys that are working, right? So we've got to send them to the front office. Well, that didn't work. We do use the crisis alert system through Synthegix, which is the badge that you'll see in this next slide. I know we've talked about this before, but I'll give you a quick overview of it. It's a simple system, it's wearable, and powers everyone. All of our staff have one on their, in their possession if they are Lexington One employee. Keep that in mind because we do contracts on staff, and within those contracts, like we commented earlier, the other end of that contract, they don't want their folks wearing this badge. So we have attempted those, but for our employees, we all wear this badge. It does give a single response, so if the individual needed help from the staff on site, they press that button and you will get, there's a certain number of times and they will get help from the staff on site. If they needed to lock down a campus, they press that button a certain number of times and it will lock down that campus, and you'll see a slide in a minute that kind of go through that. What happens when they need the, need the help? Either way, it's going to alert to the staff member's phone, the responder's phone. It brings up the map, it tells them, hey, whoever pressed that button, if it's Ms. Susie, it's going to say, Ms. Susie in room 210 needs your assistance. The same thing happens for our lockdowns. It does the same exact thing, it takes over the computer as well. In the school environment, everyone's computer is attached to this system. For the lockdown itself, now when the badge goes off, it does also signal lights, which a couple of them are in here, start to flash red, the computer takes over, the alert goes to the phone service, and also does a PA announcement, right? So it'll tell them lockdown, lock lights out of sight. At the same time, it's connecting to Lexington County Dispatch. So it's making a phone call to Lexington County Dispatch. We are working with Synthegix to make that more of a takeover for their terminals. We're told it'll happen in the second quarter, but it's been an ongoing process since we started with the Synthegix. We work with Lexington County Dispatch officials, and I'm excited for that to happen because then it gives them the power to see exactly what we're dealing with at the school, right? It's going to give them the map, it's going to show them where the person's at, it'll show them six people. If they alert at one time, it'll pop up on the map and show them six people in that area. So it helps them communicate to those who are responding a lot better. We do have a vape detection sensors in place now. That project is complete for the most part. We do have a few that are needing to have hatches cut, which is like a hard ceiling that has to then contract someone else to cut that hard ceiling to get that vape detector in there. It's, it's an ongoing fun time, I will say that, because those, those, as my administrators here can speak to it, those things are alerting, and you're having to manage that now. So we, we're working with those folks and doing our best to make sure those are working correctly, okay? So any technology, and I wish Derek were up here with me, but it can be a challenge, you know, working through those solutions. The camera update, we had three phases of a project. The first phase was the high schools and the middle schools, that was completed, 12, 31 are the number of cameras that were purchased. The second phase was half the elementary schools. That, that project is completed. We're now moving into the second phase, or third phase, excuse me, to catch the other half of all elementary schools. So all of that is, is working seamlessly with our IT group, and that contract is working great. So we, we're on schedule to, I hope to get done, maybe spring, springtime, maybe before. I mean, it really just depends on that vendor, I guess, but they're moving right along. We do utilize door locks, excuse me, digital door locks on the exterior of our schools. We're working through a project currently to get those on interior doors in certain areas. We've had a kind of a hiccup with the vendor, so we're working through that with procurement. It's an ongoing process every day. Love our procurement people, wish they were here to give them kudos. But yeah, we do have these type of door locks and we're working on something a little bit better down the road. Behavioral threat assessment, so this was a hot topic, I know, give kind of an overview. We've had 74 screenings completed, five of those were full assessments. Now, understand, if you go through and you go online to SC DOE, Department of Ed, you can look this information up as to the AD's two-page document for behavioral threat assessment. The focus of that threat assessment is to identify, gather, assess the situation, and bring the, the needed help for that student, if you will. So we work with Lexington County Mental Health, we work with our law enforcement partners, we work with each school to create a behavioral threat assessment team. By law, we are required to have a threat assessment team at each school. We check that box. And you'll see in the next slide the number of trains that we have provided across this district. We do follow that K-12 second edition that is posted online through Department of Ed. So if there's any questions as to how we're doing this, that is how we're doing it. We do have a district team that meets as well, and we have a school at, excuse me, each team has a school. Now, when an assessment occurs, the easiest way I can say it is if, in my day, we used to go around saying, hey, I'm going to kill you. Well, today, you can't say that without documentation being filed and a, and a review happening, okay? So that's a lot of what this is. It's, it's a student making a threat to another student, okay? So I want to make, I can't really get into the weeds of what is a threat, right? I mean, I understand what a threat is from coming from a law enforcement side, but just want to make sure it's not a bullying incident, it's a threat has to be made. There is a separate side of the bullying side that goes over to Student Services, the other half. I think we'll probably talk about that in a minute, but for us, we're looking at, does the child pose a threat? That's the whole purpose of the team. It's not that they made a threat, I mean, we know they did that, that's what got them to this point. We have to meet and determine if that child or student poses a threat. And even, and by the end of it, you're looking at, you know, decision of a low threat, a medium threat, a high threat, or an imminent threat, okay? So that kind of gives you the brief overview of what behavioral threat assessment is. It's a team process in order for this to occur. The threat, of course, happens, the administration gets the threat, they then contact their team members, which is a minimum of a administrator, a school resource officer, and a psychologist or counselor. Those three people come together to do the screener for this. The screener then dictates if they go to a full assessment by the boxes that they check. And again, I encourage you to go online and look this up and read through the paperwork. Once they go full assessment, part of the process, they call our office, one of our folks from my office will be a part of that full assessment. We then have to call Lexington County Mental Health Director. She will decide which member of her team will be a part of the full assessment at that school location. So we have this pretty well streamlined, and Lexington County Mental Health, my hat's off to them because they will turn it around within a day or so to get in the, into that office with us and do this full assessment. They've been a great partner for this. Those are our dates that we held the trains this year and the trains to come, two per day. Each school has to complete a school emergency plan. They turn that in each year for a review. They work with their prospective stakeholders to create that plan. We assist them in helping them create that plan, and then we get a copy of that and review it each year. Visitor management, we do have a visitor management system, we utilize Dena Kid. We do create, we have a document created that we send to the schools that they share with their front office staff for the day-to-day operations of that front entrance. I'll kind of leave that as it is, but school safety drills, these are the requirements annually, safety drills. There is a law around this that requires us to do this. Fire drills monthly, lockdown drills, we do two lockdown drills a year at minimum. Some schools go over and above that. We do work with law enforcement assistants when we do a lockdown drill. There's documentation involved. Our law enforcement partners, as you've seen these pictures, they come, and it's great because they come to those schools, like Whitenau High School, Lexington High School, River Bluff will have 40 to 50, sometimes 60 people in there just to help us clear these spaces as quickly as we can to get everybody, what? Back to doing work, back to education, right? But we do two secure drills by law, two tornado drills, two earthquake drills. Those are our numbers from last year, 563 drills were completed, conducted across 33 school locations. We're on track to meet that again this year, of course, so. Security coverage, you know, I think it's important we understand, we do provide coverage for all events security-wise that occur in Lexington One. So if you're holding an athletic event or if you're holding a festival at the school, the expectation is that the administration let us know that that event is occurring. We then have to go into a separate system with each one of these agencies and request an officer to be present for that. You can see the hours and the events that have been worked thus far, that's as of October Accident prevention meetings, so part of our SKISBIT requirements, which are insurance company requirements, each school has to meet twice per year what they call an accident prevention meeting. They're looking at slips, trips, falls, how to prevent those. Sean manages that for us, he will attend those meetings with them, and each year we'll get a grant from SKISBIT that we work with the, a group from, of folks from schools to decide how best to spend that grant money to help prevent slips, trips, falls, okay? So think around, you know, cleaning machines for floors, rubber mats under water coolers, things of that nature to help focus those injuries, get, get those injuries away. Our safety tip line, we still, we do have a safety tip line. It is still a textable tip line. We've received 121 tips thus far, two of those are bullying-related, two of them are safety concern, and 117 were general tips. Now, some of that 117 are just hang-up calls, you know, somebody else just tested the line, see if they get anything, and they'll hang up, won't, won't make an announcement to us or a recording for us. This is new in the state of South Carolina, the Handle With Care program. University of South Carolina put this out. We worked with a fairly large group of folks, but our local first responders, so Lexington County Sheriff's Department, Lexington Police Department, Pillion Police Department. Pillion was actually the first one to take this on in their area, I think at the end of last school year, they kind of tested the waters. We implemented this about, I think officially would have been September-ish with Lexington County. So now, any first responder going to the scene of an incident, if there is a child involved and they, the first responder, feel that the school needs to be notified of this event happening, they can complete a document called a Handle With Care form. Now, I don't have a copy of this up here, but it's more or less a name of a child, the school they attend, and a statement, Handle With Care. What they want the school to know is that, hey, this child suffered some trauma the night before, maybe keep an eye on them, all right? So that is implemented now, it was a bit of a big task because we had to create a QR code so that any officer at any location around the county could scan that QR code and then pick the school that they wanted to send this document to, and it automatically shoot that document over to the administration. Haven't heard any bad comments about it, so it must be working pretty good. I haven't heard any details about it, so, but that is implemented now, which is a good thing. We do conduct site assessments at our schools. We're about three deep now, we spend about two and a half days at a campus. We come in at nighttime, we come in during the daytime two times to evaluate that campus and assess it from the outside coming in as it relates to safety, security, slips, trips, falls, anything that our, our organization, our department picks up on that we need to be doing better or we're doing really good at. All of that's put into a detailed document and shared with the principal, shared with the superintendent, full review. These are the dos that our administration had this year. This is actually from the presentation we did back in our trainings, what do we call it, nuts and bolts? So give you an idea of all of the requirements our former administration has to manage on top of all the other things they're already doing, right? That's our team. I mentioned that before, we couldn't do it without Paul Stevens, our IT technician. He manages all of my cameras, door locks, things of that nature when there's problems, helps repair those, and then Ms. Pravat with our operations specialist, she keeps us all straight in the office space. So what questions do you have? Mic drop? No?
I was just saying, I was going to say thank you for giving us that update and kind of give us a little bit more insight into what your team does. You ought to be commended, and with five people total, it sounds like that's a lot to chew, so thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
I second that, and also, I was just curious, the Handle With Care, I love that. Do you know by chance how many has, have come in?
I can get that information for you because the state does have a website they manage at the university level where they are getting those numbers. I don't know that they'll be specific to our area, it might be like a regional number, but I can, we can get that number.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, I'd like that information as well, or if you just provide it to the whole board, I think that's an amazing thing. I didn't know it existed.
Sure.
I'm not sure if this falls under this category, but you talked about different trainings, active shooter training, all the different trainings. I recently had a teacher talk about, and I hope I don't mess up the letters, CPI training? Is that something where they are learned?
Where's my instruction, folks? Yeah, I defer, I defer.
Okay, is that, is that correct? Is that like if a child is fighting with another child, like, or a child is having a problem, you help them? Proper restraint?
I got a microphone for you.
It's crisis prevention. It focuses on prevention, and then de-escalation, and then possible restraint if necessary.
But like, safety of the child? Right. So are all of our teachers not trained on that?
We train about 500 people a year, so it's, it is not all of our teachers, but it would be our most, our teachers who need it the most.
Is there a cost associated with that?
Yes.
Okay, okay, well, that makes sense because what was shared with me was there was a situation at a playground, but the teacher was like, I'm not training this, and was trying to be obvious, but I'm just going to help this child here, but was afraid for her job or something because she was doing what she felt was best, but she wasn't trained. She was like, I want to get trained.
Absolutely. We offer all year round. We try to offer more in the summer because the initial is about eight hours long and the refreshers are four hours long.
Okay. And if the teacher wants to be trained, they talk to you?
We post a schedule online, and absolutely, so.
Okay. Thank you. All right, Ford. Thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Ellisore. And the final update tonight comes from Dr. Gaskins, who's going to give us an update on grading.
Thank you, and I want to first start with an appreciation for the very strong engagement from parents and teachers and administrators from around the district in terms of our new grading practices. And I don't take for granted, working in a system where so many people want to work together to do what's best for students and also what's manageable for teachers. And so I want to begin by saying, thank you for all of the feedback we've received, and we are listening. Some of that feedback we can implement immediately, others, it'll, other parts of feedback, it'll take a little bit for us to look at the next iteration, but we are listening and we are trying to embed as much as possible, and later in the presentation, I'm going to share specifically about some of the feedback we are implementing now. So I want to start with a little bit of context because some of what we're experiencing isn't necessarily just related to changes in our grading practices. We have experienced a lot of change in the past couple of years, both with our strategic plan in Lexington One and really trying to ensure a more consistent, high-quality experience in every classroom, but also things that we're required to do by the state of South Carolina. So just in the last two years, we have brand-new English-language art standards that are more rigorous in nature and all-new instructional materials. So assessments had to be redeveloped to align both to those new standards and instructional materials. In addition... In addition, this year we have new math standards that are, again, much more rigorous and much more conceptual in nature. So it's kind of a different approach to teaching with all-new instructional materials. Those two things both impacted elementary teachers. In addition, we have required training for K-three teachers, special ed teachers, and elementary administrators in intensive literacy training called Letters. It's a two-year training that's sort of like a master's degree. Also changes in our Read to Succeed legislation with a higher score that students have to make to not be retained in third grade with also some additional expectations for early intervention. In addition to that, in Lexington One, we have the graduate profile where we're really trying to expand our definition of student achievement and the competencies. We want students to leave Lexington One with a new instructional framework that's based on research, on those practices that really do impact student progress, and then our grading changes. So while we've focused on aligning all of these efforts so it doesn't feel like one more thing, you know that a lot of change all at once can cause people to not feel that same predictability. It can be very difficult to digest. And so we do believe it's going to get easier as these changes become more familiar to everyone. These have been major adjustments for teachers, but also for the system that supports the classroom. So developing resources and providing support for teachers from the district level has also been a strain. Simultaneously, we're implementing a new curriculum management plan which outlines what will be loose across classrooms and what will be tight, really trying to understand what needs to be consistent across the district and where teachers need autonomy. So these changes don't happen without the support of people. And so we're really trying to focus on what it looks like to support people and not just implement the changes and the procedures. So this comes directly from our student handbook. And throughout our conversations about grading last year, we heard over and over that our parents want a true understanding of how their students are doing at school. And so this definition really states that grades are supposed to communicate to students and parents and guardians the student's level of progress related to the designated standards in a given course and are the result of fairly evaluating evidence of student learning through assessment. So we really are trying to communicate to parents, if your child has an eighty-five in a class during that given period, your child understands eighty-five percent of the content of the academic standards that were covered. And so trying to make that as objective as possible. In the next two slides, I'm going to address two questions that we have received frequently during the first quarter of this school year. We've mainly heard these questions at the elementary level, either from teachers and/or parents. The first one is around really understanding why we're using district common assessments. So you all know that recently we underwent a curriculum effectiveness audit, and the feedback from that audit was that we needed higher cognitive expectations across our classrooms aligned to our academic standards. We needed to eliminate redundancy in the planning efforts that was happening across the district, and we needed to use common assessments to ensure a high-quality, rigorous, standards-based experience for every student. And so in essence, we learned that we needed as a system to provide teachers with high-quality resources to use in their classrooms to eliminate the efforts happening across the board and to ensure a consistent expectation for students. So common assessments are intended to align assessment and instruction to grade-level state standards. And like I just said, ensure that all students receive a high-quality, standards-based instruction regardless of the school and classroom they attend. Also, to create the conditions for teacher teams to collaborate around assessment results and provide parents with that objective, accurate understanding of where students are performing. So in Lexington One, to create these assessments, teams of either instructional coaches and/or teachers, depending on the grade level and content area, work alongside district leaders to closely study state standards and the assessment resources and blueprints that are provided by our State Department of Education. Curriculum and assessment teams use the state-adopted, high-quality instructional materials. And you may remember that our state in the last couple of years has invested millions in high-quality instructional materials. And so those are the basis from where we pull resources for instruction and assessments. If there are gaps in those resources in terms of standards that aren't necessarily addressed or targeted, teams supplement with other resources. As a district, we have prioritized the four core subjects in developing common assessments, either in the form of an assessment itself or an assessment bank. So teachers have access to the common assessments ahead of time so they can use them to develop their daily lesson plans to make sure that students are learning the academic standards that are going to be assessed. They also have avenues to provide feedback on those assessments. Some of that feedback we implement immediately, like if there's an error on an assessment. We have also put some strategies in place to try to remedy that from happening or feedback that we would implement next year when we give the assessment again. For elementary, common assessments in ELA and math have been given for a number of years. So this is not a new practice for us in elementary in ELA and math. They have become more rigorous in the past year or two because of the new standards and instructional materials. Also, we've noticed this year with numerical grades, there's a heightened awareness for students and parents about how students are performing on those common assessments. On a positive note, our parent advisory council and our teacher leadership council, who we've met with in the past couple of weeks, have expressed increased motivation, increased effort, and students studying more at home and really putting forth more effort at school as well. Okay, the second question we've received is why homework doesn't count. And homework is designed to allow students to practice and make mistakes and for us to pick up on those misconceptions and address them while students are practicing. We don't want to penalize them during the learning process. Students have varying levels of support with homework. We want parents to be engaged and help students with homework, but there's varying levels of support across the board with that. Grading homework and other non-graded formative assessments can really skew a student's grade, either positively or negatively, decreasing the accuracy of it being a true representation of the percentage of content the student actually understands. Homework is intended to increase a student's confidence during class and on assessments. And then those major and minor assessments should be the clear evidence that the student has mastered it after that practice period is over. And I've heard in the community conversations, the athletic analogy being used, and so I'll bring that up again tonight, kind of a real-life example that practice is essential for a student to perform well in an athletic contest. While they don't earn points during practice, it's really important and helps them be more successful and gain the confidence during the game. And as a teenage mom who's learning to drive, I think it applies there, too. So those driving classes are really important. My student doesn't get his license for attending those classes and all those practice hours, but he is more likely to pass that test and get that license, I hope. I'll have a little more freedom soon from those practice hours. All right, lastly, I mentioned earlier that we are listening to feedback from the beginning of the year, and the following changes will be made in second quarter in grades three through five. First, teacher teams now have the flexibility to create their own small-focus checkpoints, which are called minor assessments. We were using district assessments during first quarter. Teachers can continue to use the district minor assessments as they are. They can revise them to add items or change them or develop their own altogether. So minor options, minor assessment options include things like comprehension, writing or grammar checkpoints, written oral responses, science investigations, rough drafts of writing, reflections of learning following a discussion protocol, products like podcasts or websites where students can use technology in creative ways to evidence their learning. Having this autonomy where teachers create their own also helps them to think about that scheduling so that they are placing those minors strategically across content areas so students don't have so many assessments all at one time. This will also help us solve another problem we've heard across first quarter about there not being enough items on the minor assessments. The second change we're making for second quarter is that separate reassessment days have been eliminated. Instead, if a student misses points on a major assessment, they receive immediate, a small group, reteach sessions during class time and can earn points back then. So I want to share a little bit more perspective on major assessments in grades three, five. Each nine weeks, students have a major assessment in science and social studies. I missed something here. Each nine weeks, they have two major assessments in ELA and math and one in science and social studies. So that would be six major assessments overall. I do want to say there will be an exception in second or third quarter where we have an overlap of units in ELA where there could be three. For each major assessment, students should have at least two minor assessments and up to four so that they receive pre, feedback on their progress during the unit of study. Reassessment opportunities are currently available in reading and math. So for each quarter, that's three reassessment opportunities, two in math and one in reading. So I mentioned earlier, there's two majors in ELA. One of those is reading and one is writing. Because students are getting feedback all along the way in writing, there's not a reassessment opportunity there. So that's three reassessments per nine weeks. So if you think about small group instruction really being a natural part of the instructional model in elementary grades where teachers are very accustomed to designing meaningful learning for other groups of students while they're working with the, with the group for target instruction, in this case, that reteaching material for those three reassessments would happen during those natural small groups. With the new approach, they can give students the reassessment items while they're in the small group instead of having that separate day set aside, which we hope will preserve instructional time. Also, at the district level, we've created a calendar to understand and spread out major assessments. Schools are using it to outline their major and minor assessments so that students don't feel overwhelmed with so many assessments all at one time. Just this morning, I talked with a principal who explained how they have calendered out assessments for this quarter to ensure students don't have any, too many in a given week. I think I remember that person saying two. Reteaching and reassessment are vital in elementary grades because it establishes a foundation which students will build on throughout their academic careers. In addition, other assessments like I-ready and SC-ready are used to make decisions around promotion and retention. And so we need to make sure that students are prepared for those assessments. But we do not want reteaching and reassessment to interfere with instructional time in terms of introducing new material. Our goal is to make reassessment meaningful to students and parents, but also manageable for teachers. I'll end the presentation the way I started it. We are, we are continuing to seek out and implement feedback. And so Ms. Mitchell and Dr. Bissel and I are going to be visiting elementary schools during the month of December, January, and February. And Dr. Price has been implementing listening sessions. We're gonna call our visits solution sessions where, this was the idea of elementary principals, that, you know, we have a lot of mechanisms where elementary teachers are giving us feedback on assessments and on curriculum frameworks and on the process, but there's nothing like sitting in front of them and hearing more about their experience. And so we're gonna spend the next three months doing that ahead of making any changes to curriculum frameworks and assessments for the following school year.
Board?
Yes, I have a few, few questions. For, I'll just, just say my little tidbit about homework. When I was in school, we would, you know, do our homework and then get a bonus on our test. If we did our homework, we'd go over our homework. That was kind of a, a way to just study for the test, you know, coming up. And it was a guide, you know, study guide as well. So I just think there, it also incentivizes other students to do their homework. So students that do their homework, you know, not only does it allow for the teacher to go over the homework in class and, you know, gives that extra teaching, allows for all the answers to be corrected, but it allows for the kids that did the homework maybe to have a curve on their, on their test. And then it also incentivizes maybe kids that didn't do the homework to do their homework because my friend over here got a curve on their test, so I'm gonna do it next time. Just a thought. I don't know how we implement that across the board, but I just, just the way that we used to do it. And I, I just thought it was, you know, it worked for us. And then I just wondered, how does it actually look for the small group reteach and earning back points? So in my mind, if a teacher gives a test and there's a, you know, group of students that do really poorly on the test, and when is she going to grade the test and then get the test back to those students? Is it the same day? Is it two days later? Has she already moved on to new material? How does that look?
So it would be a few days for the teacher to grade the assessment. And then I'm envisioning that, it depends on how many students did well and what they missed. So it could look a number of different ways. But I envision that the teacher would group students based on similar items that they missed, call them over for a small group instruction. And this is very typical in an elementary classroom. Small group instruction is a daily practice for them. So she or he would have something that the other students would be working on. She would work with those students who missed similar items, reteach, check for understanding. And when she felt like the students had mastered it, pull out the new assessment items and have the students try it right there at the table, and they would earn their points back on that assessment.
So how do you explain to a parent or a student that got an eighty-six on a test versus a kid that got a fifty-six that, sorry, your eighty-six test isn't warranted to be pulled into the small group because you did fine, even though maybe the parent would rather than get a few more points and get an A versus a kid that got fifty-six who might really need the help? It seems it's still a little bit like slushy, like just not standardized, not, not, like, I don't know, it just feels...
We are getting a lot of feedback about that, and I don't want to pretend like we have the perfect solution to it yet. Currently, the, the parent of the child with the eighty-six could request it. If the child got below a seventy, we're doing it automatically. But the parent with the child of an eighty-six could also request it and would have those problems that they missed retold or the, the, I guess, depending on the assessment, might not be a problem, retold and have the opportunity to earn the points back, too.
Okay. So are teachers, I mean, are teachers complaining about that being lost in instruction time?
We've only been implementing this new system for a few weeks now. I haven't heard that yet. But we stay in very close contact with our principals in the room, can agree that almost every one of their meetings, they're spending lots of time problem-solving together about their, how they're making the best of this at each school and what's working and what's not. So for example, some of them, to make that work and not lose instructional time, are looking across a grade level at how students did on an assessment and then splitting kits up so that one teacher might be working with those kids who only missed a few things and clarifying those while another teacher is working with a group of students who had something else in common. So they're trying lots of different strategies to make sure, more than anything, teacher, I'm sorry, students leave elementary school understanding those foundational concepts without it being a practice that's not realistic to implement.
Okay. And then I wondered about, when you say, like, the student, when they get an eighty-five means that they have knowledge of eighty-five percent of the material. So you're testing them, I guess especially on the, across the board, across the district assessments? So those are in addition to the two per nine weeks, is that right?
So the major assessments are across the district in common.
Right.
Right? The minor assessments a teacher can add, but they should completely be aligned to that major assessment, which is based on the standards during that unit of study. So it should still reveal the percentage of understanding that student has for the standards in that unit. And across the year, those are paced out on a progression.
Okay, so you said two tests per nine weeks?
For math, two for math.
Two for math.
Two for ELA, one for science, one for social studies.
So, I mean, we're hearing from parents that it's way more than that. So what, what's, what's the truth? I don't know. And it's, it's, it's so up and down in every school, too. You know, it's like, oh, we don't have that many tests. Oh, we have tests every day, so.
I think some of it is...
I think some of it is the language that we're using around minors and majors.
Can we change that, by the way?
We are...
Like test and quiz, I don't know. It's crazy to think about, but yeah.
So that language in itself, I think, is heightening an awareness around an assessment that used to just be the natural part of a day in an elementary school. Like students were taking a lot of these assessments and a parent might not even know. So they're not studying for it because we were going to just see if our kids were associated with the standards. So I think some of it is the language that we're using. I think also at the beginning of the year, we didn't do any assessment for like the first three weeks because we were giving I-ready, getting to know, and so then they were kind of piled up. So creating that district calendar that we have now, I hope is going to help with that. So they don't get piled up anymore and it doesn't feel like they're taking so many at any given time.
Okay. And last question, I'm going to try not to botch this, but is it, is it true that we're testing, that we could potentially be testing students on material that they haven't learned yet? Because it's, we're testing to a standard versus to what the material they've, they've been taught. Does that make sense?
Um, so we, we would never advise that a teacher give the district common assessment if they've not taught all the material on it. They should work with their administrator to remove any items that they have not gotten to yet.
And they, they're aware of that that's something that they can do?
I'm looking at elementary principals tonight, yes. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, I, I don't really have questions. I just want to say some things. Number one, I do feel and appreciate that I think y'all are hearing a lot of it. The volume of this, to me, has been probably the most volume of feedback, other than one other thing, since I've been on the board. And oftentimes, when I, when I see volume across multiple grade levels and multiple different schools, it does highlight that there is in fact a missing link. Is it fair to assess, not to use that word, but this, this idea of common assessments came out of the curriculum model? Is that correct?
It did, but it's also considered a best practice in education. So it did, wasn't just a recommendation from the audit. It is one of the strategies that's proven to ensure students get a standards-based in, um, education.
So same time last year, for let's just say a third grade classroom, maybe fourth grade classroom, did they have common assessments last year?
Yes, they've had them for a number of years in ELA and math.
Okay.
Science and social studies are new this year for common assessments.
Okay. Um, where did the pacing guide for curriculum and testing come from? I hear the calendar, but it's my understanding, and again, I don't live this space every day, but from what I've heard and what conversations we've had, that the, the instructional pacing is something that's provided to the teachers from the district level. So who developed that and it, in your opinion, I mean, I know we're held to certain standards by the state and there's nothing that we can do about that. But it seems like we're just, I'm an elementary mom and my child's not on grading, but it seems like we are flying through things and then we're just moving right to the next thing. And there isn't, my worry is that when we start to look at these scores of these kids who are in first grade that moved to second, they're going to have a slide because they're not actually retaining the information because we're moving too fast. Does that make sense?
It does. So we have the standards provided by the state and we are required to teach them all for each grade level. So we look across the year at the best way to group those standards and teach them. And I mentioned earlier that we also have new high-quality instructional materials. So some of the pacing right now is also dictated by how those materials are designed. So for example, in our reading curriculum, there are certain modules. They are in order for a certain reason because the way this, um, standards are scaffolded over time and the way the progression's laid out. So we wouldn't want to mix up how those modules are organized. So, I mean, I don't want to say it's dictated by our instructional materials, but that is one of the structures that we have in place to help us with that scope and sequence. We do have, um, depending on the grade level and content area, a group of coaches or teachers come together, look closely, unpack those standards, look at the instructional materials, see where standards are not addressed in them, supplement where they're, where we need to, to build our curriculum frameworks, which ultimately dictate our pacing.
For what it's worth, I think that we have taken the fun out of school and the art of teaching away from our teachers a little bit too much. I think we went from zero to sixty and we maybe should have gone to thirty. And so what is our, I mean, you've heard all the feedback we've heard too. What, I hear what we've already done. I hear where we're going and what y'all are going to do. But at some point, it's too late in the school year. So what can change when we get back from break? Meaning like winter break is an example.
Right. Well, I would say even when we get back from Thanksgiving break and, and hopefully now, some of those minor assessments are the ones that are more project-related or some of like the science investigations and things that teachers have more autonomy with and are using their art. Um, and talking with principals, they've said, you know, we made the change for second quarter, but it takes some time to develop those things. And so there wasn't an immediate change that we're seeing in schools as teachers make that shift. But I do believe we'll begin to see that. Nobody wants kids to love school more than I do.
And last, sorry, last question, you don't have to tell me names, but at the district level, who creates, created the common assessments? Like, is it a group effort? Is it one person? Do we hire anybody from the outside?
So sticking with elementary for now, um, in ELA in math, we use the instructional materials, the state-adopted instructional materials as a basis. So we don't try to create assessments from scratch. We use those materials. Our teams of instructional coaches look at our curriculum frameworks and those assessments. And again, um, so an example might be on a math assessment, the state standard says that a certain type of model has to be used and the Eureka Math, um, assessment materials don't include that model. So those coaches may change that question so that it includes the type of model that's in the state standards. Our teachers give feedback on those assessments too. So right now, our groups of coaches are taking every assessment ahead of the next unit themselves. They're also giving it to other coaches who didn't work on the same one they did for feedback. A lot of our teachers are doing that right now too, taking those assessments ahead of teaching a unit. Um, in, in hopes that we can ensure that not only that the, um, assessments are accurate and ready to go, but that we have a clear understanding of those things that kids will be assessed on. A very similar approach in language arts. The coaches are developing from the state-adopted high-quality materials and teachers are providing feedback. This spring, we do want to bring a te, a group of teachers together to look at all of the feedback that's been collected this year so they can make recommendations ahead of summer curriculum writing on those, um, changes they would like to see made to the assessments. In science and social studies, well, science, it's mainly the state-adopted materials that are being used to develop those too. We don't have coaches, so it's been teacher teams working alongside our district coordinator on those. In social studies, we did not get as far along as we had hoped this summer with curriculum writing. And so we are paying an outside consultant to help with those.
Um... I, I know it's almost ten o'clock. Um, and, and I can, we can touch base later. I just, um, a few thoughts, you know, where do we draw the line? If best practice is common assessments, then why doesn't the state just write tests and just say, "Teachers, give these tests. Teachers, teach these lessons. Use these books." You know, if that's best practice, or is best practice letting our educators? I mean, I, my job is teacher education and I'm seeing these students at USC who, uh, other places too, but I'm at USC, who love their content and they want to teach it. And, um, I, I'm not sure that this is the common practice everywhere. And we give them opportunities, like I'm starting to get assignments sent in where they've created these unit work samples that start with pre-tests and post-tests and, and then they're going to come get a job in Lexington One and not do any of that because we give them this cookie cutter thing and this is what you have to do. And so I just, it, it's just something to, to think about. Um, and as far as homework is concerned, are you saying that just for elementary, that it's not graded? Or across the board, K-12?
It is not supposed to be graded across the board. So in secondary, it's in that non-graded formative column.
Okay.
Um, there was a much stronger reset in elementary, which I think is what we're feeling right now too. So our secondary administrators are monitoring that right now as well.
I, I know the comment on the slide says, "This ensures the final grade is an honest and reliable statement." I, I'm not sure that a cumulative homework grade over a unit one thirty percent grade is really going to affect a score. I have two teenagers at home and, um, sometimes when you put a little bit of teeth into something, they might do it. And if not, then why? What's the purpose? You know? I don't know that teenagers will do homework if there's not anything. I mean, some of them will, you know, but...
Are you recommending that as learners gain independence, that should be, like, grading homework should be reconsidered then? Like, when they can do it more independently then?
That's good for right now. All right. Board?
I, I actually have some. I'm going to try and be brief because I know you're working overtime now. And for you to be fresh this time of night and field all these board questions, I appreciate so. Let me ask this from a little bit of a different angle. So through the community conversations we've been through, through some of the feedback we've gotten from you and gotten from Dr. Price about us making adjustments, from time to time, it appears like we are fighting ourselves internally. But what I heard you say is our ELA standards changed within the last two years. Our math standards changed this year. And now the common assessment, which is based on those standards, is a new change. And, and now we're having teachers assess on a frequency that we may not have had them assess before. The question I have as a board member is, how can we as board members advocate for the district and these parents that are giving us feedback to the Department of Education to potentially stand down because it is strangling the kids? They are not learning. I mean, I think some of them are, because, because for me, I have, have two children and one's just a high flyer and the other one is a more reserved learner. And I could see right now, if you're teaching concept and then you're supposed to have practice time and mastery, it seems like instead of that being concept on Monday, practice time on Tuesday, mastery on Wednesday, it's almost like it's concept today, mastery tomorrow. I could see one of my children high-flying and taking off, but my other one would be a failure. And, and I think the goal is for us as a district to educate kids academically. So I'm trying to find out, what can I do as a board member to help talk to the state superintendent, whoever? This is what's happening. How do we get that feedback to them so that maybe they need to back off a little bit? I, because, because what I'm not understanding right now is, have we changed so much this year because of our curriculum audit findings or because of our State Department of Education? Or are we serving thirty-one flavors all at once to education and frustrating everybody? Because that's what I sense in the room. Everybody's frustrated right now because it's like we're maybe trying to do so many things at once. So help me understand, Dr. Price, you may be able to help, but help me understand, what can I do to advocate to slow this thing down?
Teachers are calling us, parents are calling us, like, I spent forty-five minutes on the phone last night with an elementary teacher. It's, it's a lot.
And, and we certainly hear all of that. And, and I think it's been echoed before that the, the concept and the intent behind everything that's going on is for, um, you know, a perceived positive outcome. It's all done for a reason. Um, but we are balancing a lot of new. We've got new standards that you just mentioned in ELA. We've got new standards in math. We've got new grading requirements that we decided to change the method that we were using this year, um, for grades three through five. With that, there's coming guidelines and best practices and recommendations about how to do it the right way. And then finding the balance. Do we just say, "Well, you can do grades. Go make them what you want to make them"? Do we want to teach and then build assessments off of what we're teaching? Or do we want to take the standards and the assessments that we know they're going to be assessed on and build them towards preparation for that? So there's a balance in all of that. And I think what all of our teams are trying to do is to put forth the best effort to make sure we are moving in a direction that we need to be moving. But what we're hearing is, is what we're doing right now is, is difficult and challenging. And so what we're trying to do is to be responsive to that, to keep the main thing the main thing. But maybe revisit what we've done up to this point and what we're planning to do moving forward. One of the things that I've heard frequently is the number of assessments. Well, in quarter one, the major assessments, the major common assessments, those were created by a, a district-level staff or committee. The minor assessments were also created by district-level committees or staff. One thing that has changed moving forward now, as Dr. Gaskins explained, is those district-created common minors are still there if you want to use them, but we've returned that autonomy to the teachers. So how you want to assess the minor assessments of students moving along, um, the way is now up to the teacher, as long as it's, you know, aligned to standards. And she listed several different ways that those are now going to be allowed. But that will take time for teachers to create and make those adjustments. And that's why we're hoping to see that the number of quizzes and tests are going to come down because of the changes that have been made so far. And what we want to continue to do is to take this, to try some of these changes, continue to take feedback, and then adjust it along the way. We want to get to a place where we're, we, we've set high expectations for ourselves. You know, our students in, in, uh, different grades are going to be assessed. And in third grade, you've got a target score that you've got to meet if you want to be promoted to the fourth grade. And then in others, you know, we talked about the results of our report cards today. That's important to us. We've got goals that are connected to those report cards. And if we're going to perform better or higher than we have been performing, then we've got to do things differently. And so trying to use best practices and the materials that are provided to us with these new standards is our effort to try to get us there. But based on the feedback we're getting, there are some things that need to be tweaked along the way. What we are committed to is to continue to check into that feedback, to listen to it and make adjustments that will make it more digestible for everyone. Students, teachers, administrators, parents, everyone. But continue to keep us along that journey of, of the goals that we have set for ourselves. We want to get there. We want to achieve those. We want to be a high, a highly successful, high-performing school district. And that means in order to get higher than we currently are, we have to do things differently than we've been doing. But again, if there's a balance. And so this is new for us. We've just got through the first nine weeks of doing this new thing. And we're making changes for second nine weeks. So we want to continue to listen to all of this feedback, including what, what our board is sharing with us too. That's important to us also. And try to find the right balance to keep us moving in the right direction. What I, what I, what I don't want to do is, you know, the old proverbial saying, "Don't, don't throw the baby out with the bathwater."
Correct.
Don't, don't scrap the whole thing. It's finding that right balance. And I think the feedback that we have been collecting from all of these folks is helping us make some of those decisions. And we're committed to continuing that.
Okay. I appreciate that. The, one other thing I, I will follow up on is, I think this has gotten pretty clear on the board's, um, radar because of the two community conversations. The one concern I have is the next community conversation is not until January, when we're into a new semester. So I, we don't have to solve it tonight, but I think we need to re, resolve, how are we going to collect that raw feedback like we've collected over the last two months prior to January? Because now we're into the first nine weeks of the second semester and is it working or is it not working? I just don't want to have a parent, like some of these parents, come to me in January or February and... I just don't want to have a parent, like some of these parents, come to me in January or February and say, "Oh, this thing's all falling apart. The house is on fire. Now we now have to make some adjustments that second nine weeks of, of that semester." So we don't have to solve it tonight, but I think we need to be creative in terms of, how do we get that raw feedback right away and make adjustments on the fly if we need to?
Thank you, Mr. Rice.
Thank you, Dr. Gaskins.
All right, now, Ms. Miller.
Well, Dr. Price.
Is that the rest of your superintendent? Okay. Ms. Miller, I'll turn it over to you for our finance report.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Dr. Price and board members. This evening, we have the general fund, uh, revenue and expenditures as of October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. You can see here that total revenue year-to-date is approximately seventy-seven million. Fifty-five million of that is state revenue. Nine million is from transfers and then approximately twelve million is local revenue. Right now, our local revenue is approximately sixteen percent of the total revenue and we are still projecting that to be approximately thirty-seven percent of our total revenue for the year. And we should see the large increase of that starting in January. For the sake of time, I'll skip right through the summary of the local, or of our revenue, um, which you have in your packet, the more detailed version of that. Moving to expenditures, we have approximately a hundred and eleven million of expenditures. As of October thirty-first, the largest portion of that is approximately ninety-four million, which is our salaries and benefits. That's about eighty-four percent of all expenditures year-to-date. And we do expect that to be approximately eighty-eight percent as we get to year end. There is the summary of your expenditures. And then we have our total general fund balance as of October thirty-first. The amount there for the total is approximately eighty-two million. That is up two-point-eight million from last month. Please keep in mind that this monthly balance does not indicate what our year-end balance is going to be just because of the nature of our revenue. It does not come in at the same, um, time as our expenditures are going out. So while we are at a lower point, we will see that uptick towards the end of the year. Next is your general fund unassigned fund balance as of October thirty-first. Um, it's hard to read those numbers, but, um, on those, you can see that as of October thirty-first, it was approximately sixty-five million. Again, this is below our required amount, which is an annual requirement, which is approximately sixty-seven million. Again, I expect it to stay below that until we get to January, when we do start to see the larger increase of our local revenue. You'll also notice in your board report this evening, there's actually two reports. I was so excited to put it in there. Um, one was one prior to a journal entry. We did just the timing of when we ran our reports and then we received some revenue for the month. We went ahead and posted that and reran reports and I just failed to remove the old version. So you have both of those in there. But the correct version, um, is the one where the total fund balance is approximately eighty-two million dollars. And you'll notice on the second page of the fund balance report, I've added some notes and they, uh, match up, they correlate to the columns on that first page. I know it's a late evening tonight. I'm happy to go through that with you if you want to go through that or if you want to save that for next month or if you have questions that you want to ask me after you've had a chance to review it. I'm happy to do it that way, whatever, um, you prefer.
Madam Chair, I think that's probably something maybe in our, um, budget workshop we could dig into, which is just in a few weeks, in the interest of time if the board agrees.
Okay.
Okay.
And then lastly, you have your unauthorized numbers for the month. Um, we had a approximately, uh, just over a thousand transactions, a thousand, twenty transactions, and thirty of those were classified as unauthorized and have been properly ratified. And at this time, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Board, do you have any questions? Okay, we're moving on to action items now. Um, do I hear a motion to approve the reappointment of a procurement review panel member?
Madam Chair, I move to approve Mr. Stephen Taylor as the Chief Financial Officer's appointee to the procurement review panel. Mr. Taylor will replace Ms. Lindy, can't speak this late, Linda Robinson on January first, twenty-twenty-six.
Thank you, Ms. Shealy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Um, any discussion, Ms. Miller?
Just wanted to let you know that Ms. Linda Robinson, um, reached out to us. She is retiring from Lexington Richland Five. And so, um, Mr. Stephen Taylor has agreed to fill this role. And he currently serves as the Director of Procurement at Lexington Two. And so we're grateful for him agreeing to do that.
Thank you. Board, any questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Price, I think that all of these policies that we have are yours tonight for action items. Have you received any updates on any of these policies?
No, just the, the changes that I have made were from, um, the feedback that I received last time. We've incorporated all that, I think, into the, um, updates that you see posted here. So I have not received any new information.
On any of these, okay.
Correct.
Hearing that, do I hear a motion regarding second reading of policies?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I, uh, move to approve, um, second reading of all of these policies and I will be glad to list them off if you would like me to.
Probably need to list them off.
All right, here we go. So Madam Chair, I move to approve policy GBBAA, GBBAA-R, annual leave bank for catastrophic illnesses or incidents. Uh, also including policy GBC, sorry. G, it's not showing up.
Madam Chair, can you make one motion, add all of these together?
We're doing them collectively as one big.
We have before and by Robert's rules, if we make a motion, we can. You want me to do it? Do you need me to show it? Okay. All right, Madam Chair, I move that we approve policy GBBAA, GBBAA-R, annual leave. Policy GBC, staff compensation. Policy GC slash GDC, GCC slash G, GDC dash R. GCC slash GCD dash R two, staff leaves and absences. Policy GCK, GCK dash R, professional staff assignments and transfers. Policy GCOA, GCOA dash R, evaluation of instructional staff. Policy GCQC slash GCQD, resignation of instructional staff, administrative staff. Policy GCQF, GCQF dash R, discipline suspension and dismissal of professional staff. Deletion of CGPH, administrative personnel vacations. And deletion of administrative rule CGPB dash R, administrative office schedules.
Thank you, Ms. Flashnick. We have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. The board has held two successful community conversations to date. One at Gilbert High School on October twenty-eighth and just recently at Pillion High School on November eleventh. Tonight, throughout the meeting, you've heard lots of feedback from what we did here at our community conversations and more dialogue will continue to happen regarding those. Our next one is January twenty-ninth at Riverbluff High School. On October sixteenth, Mrs. Shealy and I attended a South Carolina School Boards Association Board Institute session. These sessions are held each year and each year's topic varies. This year's topic was from blueprints to ballot box, making the case for school construction. On October twenty-second, Mr. Rice, Mrs. Shealy and Mr. Pizzuti attended a South Carolina School Boards Association Regional Advocacy Meeting. And, um, let's see here. This week is American Education Week and on behalf of the board, we offer a heartfelt thank you to the people who are truly the heart and soul of our district, our educators and staff, many of whom are still here with us tonight at ten fifteen and have to be back at work crazy early in the morning. Can't believe you're still here. To our teachers, thank you for your incredible passion, resilience and creativity. You adapt to every student's unique needs. You inspire curiosity and you build the foundational knowledge that empowers our future. The positive impact you have lasts a lifetime. We must also recognize our entire support staff, the custodians, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, office staff, nurses, counselors and instructional assistants and everyone who often work behind the scenes to make everything possible. And finally, to our school administrators and central service staff who provide the leadership to over four thousand employees and those central services staff make it seem effortless to provide the support our employees need each and every day. And support to the board. So if you are a parent or community member watching this evening during American Education Week and throughout the year, let's all make a conscious effort to say thank you to the dedicated professionals in our schools and departments who work together for the success of every student. With that, do I hear a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Madam Chair, motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.